Okay. Welcome everyone to the night. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Vice President DeGrom, if you wouldn't mind reading the open public meeting act statement, please.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of October, this is not October 16th. November 7th, 2018 was included in the list of meeting notices sent to the newspapers of record. Posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building and has remained continuously posted the required notices under the statute. In addition to copy, this notice has been available to the public. It is on file in the office of the municipal clerk.
Excellent. Thank you. Can we stand for the indication of vice president?
Dear God, thank you. On behalf of everyone who is here tonight, thank you for everyone for gathering and give us the wisdom to govern evil way of conflicting interests and interests of all of our times. We pray for the town of Phillipsburg, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America. Amen.
A pledge made to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Rocco.
Council President Fulfer.
Here.
Council Vice President DeGrom.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Here.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Here.
All right. I'd also like to make honorable mention that Council Presidents are signees in the House. So Council President is a signee. You appear.
Thank you.
Just to, it's nice to see you. All right. Moving forward, Council, before we proceed, I would like to ask for your permission to amend the agenda for this evening for two reasons. One, we have two young ladies in the audience this evening with a four-minute demonstration. They timed it because she told me she timed it four minutes. If we can put them before the payment of the bills list and then go into an executive session for sewer litigation prior to the payment of the bills.
And the presentations?
Yep. Four-minute presentation. I'd like to amend it, but I'd like everybody's permission. Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So then we will go ahead and with the announcements, there is a Veterans Day on November 11th, 2018. The municipal building is closed. I believe it is a holiday for the municipal building. The municipal day, correct? Okay. And there's also a, Anne, you're here? The high school's putting on a presentation. Am I correct, Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And is anyone from council attending?
So Nixon?
It's Sunday.
Oh, yeah, okay.
There's also a veterans down at Chappelle Park.
Chappelle Park, right?
Yeah, maybe not.
So the veterans, the veterans at Chappelle Park starts at what time?
11:00.
At 11:00? And the high school starts at 1:00?
1:00.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know I won't be in town at the 1:00 PM one, but I could be there at 11:00. I'll hold onto that though. I don't want my wife to be mad. New Jersey League of Municipalities, which occurred between the 13th and 16th. We have sewer meeting and a council meeting both at November, on November 20, 2018. So the approval of minutes from the work session for February 13th.
So.
Does anyone have any changes? Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Epstein.
Council Vice President DeGrom.
Epstein.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Council President Fulfer.
Yes.
All right. And we're going to go ahead with the unite with light, please. Want to come forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
So you can see it now?
Right. Is that what's out front?
Yes.
Okay. That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Very well.
Okay. Hi. My name is Stu Ann Williams and I'm, I live at Four Wilson Street. I'm a volunteer with the Phillipsburg area arts community. We are a volunteer group of creative and thoughtful and motivated citizens of Phillipsburg that all just came together. And our mission is to unite the Phillipsburg community with low-cost or no-cost art experiences. So we would like to bring out the artists in every participant and the community in every event that we do. So far, we've held an art gathering. We've hosted a public art show. And I don't know if you know this about me, but I won the pork roll costume contest. That was pretty exciting. And most recently, I organized the Halloween window painting event, so I hope you enjoy the view. And we just did that to beautify the parade route for the Phillipsburg East and Halloween Parade. So we're currently in the process of becoming a nonprofit, so we have to raise some money to purchase art supplies and for the fees involved in obtaining our status. So we chose to sell luminary bags. Saw them on the way in. As a way of not only supporting us, but also giving back to the community by providing a beautiful experience, donating at least 200 cans of food to the food bank and sharing the proceeds with Norwest Cap. So the luminaries are weighed down with a can of donated food. There's a little LED light candle in there. And we're going to set them up on South Main Street December 15th around 6:00. It'll be a two-hour event and then we'll take them all down. So the community, everybody can come and view the luminaries, but also participate in a public art show. And they can do a make and take art project if they'd like. So this project will benefit both groups, Norwest Cap and us, and our shared community in a big and I think a meaningful way. It's our goal to make this an annual event that grows bigger each year. We'd like to light up Main Street, but we'd also like that light to spread into many neighborhoods around town, so every person can experience the beauty of a simple glowing paper bag. And that's all it really is. It's a paper bag, but it represents that on this one night, we all came together to experience the same things. And we enjoy our community, we support a good cause in a beautiful setting. So it's just one new tradition that we could start that's unique to Phillipsburg and enjoyed by all of us. In order to do this though, I need to request no parking from the Free Bridge to Hudson Street, right before the Black Bridge. On this one night, it's only for two hours. It's only for one night and it's, you know, hopefully a new annual tradition that people will look forward to coming to year after year.
You said it starts at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
So you need it open from 6:00 to 8:00?
Right.
Okay.
No parking from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, December 15th.
And have you filled out the permit form already?
No. Yeah, it's 30 days.
30 days.
So I'll get on that. I just wanted to ask first.
Oh, no. Listen, I, you won't find any argument for me. I think it's an awesome idea.
Okay, right on.
I think it's awesome.
Fun.
Does anyone from council have any, any comments? That'd cut you off, did it?
Not at all.
Okay.
I could go on, but I'm off.
That goes through the police department.
Police department as well? I'm sure Chief Seton will have an issue with that.
What's the special use?
Yeah. Once the special use permits filled out, I'm sure Chief Seton will take a look at it and he'll be okay with it.
All right.
We'll go ahead. I'll draft an email and send it over to him. Do you have any issues? Councilman?
I have no other comments. Thank you.
I know it takes a lot of courage to come up and present ideas, especially if you're new. I'm nervous sometimes each week even here myself, so.
Okay. Yeah, my voice is a little shaky, but that's all right.
I commend you.
I'm new to stardom, you know, I just won the pork roll contest, so.
You're an award winner.
I'm not really used to the line idea, but.
We're bringing an award winner to our community to even expand it more. The graphics are beautiful. It's done right. Best of luck. Please contact Vicki anything you need in addition to this police department. We're here for you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Really cool. Thank you.
Super.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session. We'll do it before the bills list. I'd rather go into executive session first. Executive session first for matters of litigation.
Action may be taken, right?
Yeah, action may be taken.
Resolution 2018-203.
Okay. I'd say approximately 15 to 20 minutes.
The change happened there.
Some move. Sounds like I married her. Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to resume? Some move?
Oh, pretty good.
Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn? Some move?
Oh, pretty good.
Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn? Some move?
Oh, pretty good.
Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Yes. Executive session. Councilwoman Davis.
I'd like to make a motion for resolution authorizing the offering of a settlement based on the discussion in the executive session.
Resolution 2018-0, 204.
204.
Second? Or do you need motion? I'll motion.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Davis may adjourn.
I'll head in on second. Vice President DeGrom, third. Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Council Vice President DeGrom.
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Here are the bills list. Vic, you want to do both at the same time? Or you want to do bills list A first?
I'll do A first.
Okay.
The current fund, $139,924.37. State federal grants, $6,507.30. Capital fund, $39,545. Sewer utility fund, $52,409.71. Planning board trust fund, $623.60. Bridge development, $7,485.50. Dog trust fund, $1,300. Section 8, $353.25. General trust fund, $1,635. Agency fund, $284.32. Per regular bill list of $250,068.5. No section 8 rent payments. Prepaid bill list, state federal grants, $39,000. Agency fund, $150,831.83. Per prepaid bill list of $189,831.83. Grant total of all funds, $439,899.88.
Motion to adopt the bill list?
Motion. Second. I'm asking for a second.
Oh, second.
All right. Councilwoman McVeigh, do you have anything?
I don't have.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Number 1, 47206, portable restroom for portable pulitzer. I feel that we should send that back to the downtown merchants since they said it's not a, a town function. They kept on thriving on that, but this is not a town function. And I think we should send that $1,600 back to them and let them pay for it.
That was 74, 74206, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would invite the 291.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure they have it.
I know this is, this is simple stuff, but still, this has to do with pulitzer festival. 29369, states for the signs and vinyl stickers for the festival lawn signs. I think we should send that back to them too.
That's 74105, to graphic action?
Yes.
Okay. That was in the amount of $159, correct?
Correct.
If I'm correct.
No, no.
No?
It's simple. It's states for the signs for $10 and the festival lawn signs are $25. That's what I, I mean, it's simple, but it's still, you know, they said it's, it's their baby, so let them pay the baby.
What check number is this?
Yeah. Councilman, just give me the check number, go for it.
I have the PO number.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
29369. And that is with, with permission.
On the checking?
No.
It's 74185. It's on page 1 of 74.
No, I'm sorry. It's okay.
Is that it?
Those are cents for the 5K.
Signs for the 5K, amount of $159.
Yeah, that's $159.
All those things are probably on the same check.
Correct. I do believe that they are. I wrote, that's why I wrote zero. Okay. I actually have a quick question on it, Vic. I had spoken with CFO Murlow because he responded to an email from Vice President DeGrom stating that there was a mix-up with regard to, long story short, they donated the proceeds to the youth center. So CFO Murlow said that the mayor and Rick Thompson had paid the $159.
Oh, that's.
News to you?
Well, I, I did hear something about that. They donated it, so they were supposed to pay back to the general.
Okay. So we probably should hold that until we find out more because I don't, we don't see any money coming in and I don't think that it should be on an invoice if it's our, if they pay for it. Sorry, Councilman.
The other thing that I kind of have a thing about, and that's the cards, the Rick Thompson, the business cards. His job is over already. Why are we paying for it? I just can't understand that. And he's not even a director and they're giving him cards. I don't know where that lies or whatever.
So because he wasn't race noticed properly, we can't discuss his function, but what we can do is we can discuss the title.
He discussed the bill.
We can discuss the bill. So the bills, the Councilman McVeigh is saying that the title, or that the cards are unnecessary because the position is no longer valid. Fair to say? Fair?
Yeah. Let me see, where am I at here? The kiosk, airtime, we're paying for two of them for 11715. I called Bob Murlow today and Bob said, yes, there are both of them. And Bob's going to look to see if they can cancel the one. And since the mayor doesn't want to move it, I'd like to see if possibly we can send it back for some type of reimbursement or whatever.
I asked Bob about that today because he told me and he said that he didn't hear back from them yet, that he knows that this is from September and that he'll look at stopping the airtime from now October till current. But then in the staff meeting that we had on Monday, the mayor did ask Stan and also Steve Davis to look into moving the kiosks to Market Street.
Okay. I mean, we don't get that information, so we don't know.
In the meantime, I think it is best to hold it and I'll tell you why. Councilman McVeigh, we must have been doing our homework together. I also was going to ask to hold this bill because the, we've been collecting fees for the transit lot and we've got about $1,800 in fees that have not been refunded that since the passage of the ordinance that states that it was illegal to take fees for the transit lot. I really don't, we don't know yet whether or not we can refund them. We're still, I mean, according to CFO Murlow, the ECC doesn't even know if it's possible, but there has to be a way to track someone down by the credit card number that they used.
Maybe through the bank, but I don't know what that would be.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to be time.
Sure, but.
A lot of time.
I got to.
For 1,800 hours, it's a lot of time.
I'm sorry, but the legality is what I'm worried about. We shouldn't have been taking it and if someone finds out or files suit against the Phillipsburg, we're in a liability. I'd rather take the time to correct our mistake than, I mean, that's completely up to council. That's just my personal opinion. But I agree with Councilman McVeigh to hold that check, so unfortunately you're on. Councilman, I apologize once again for interrupting you.
And I do understand about the Polar Express dumpsters. I guess Mr. Cotty did pay the mayor months ago and now this is being set forth to us.
Back in 2017, it was.
2017.
Yeah, 2017, he was settled.
For 6887.
Correct.
But Cotty did pay the, the 6887.
We took the money from the railroad and was supposed to settle with Eldmore for the dumpsters. We did not settle with Eldmore.
That's all I have. Enough.
Council Vice President.
74177 for RT Environmental. Do we know if that is the mold survey for Corless Avenue or if that is for the Armory?
I talked to, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I talked to Bob Murlow today about that. We approved $3,488 and right now it's $3,833. We approved that a couple of months for the municipal building and he said he doesn't wear the increase and I'd like to hold that.
No, I have 3488. That's right now.
I have 38, 348.
Is it for Corless Avenue though?
That's for Corless Avenue.
Vic, can you make a note that we can get a copy of that? Sure. I'd like to know what the safety of the employees are.
We're looking to hold.
I'm okay with paying it as long as we have the survey and we can review it.
But Councilman McVeigh, want a little bit?
No, I, I misunderstood.
Okay.
I thought, I have the wrong, I missed it at 2:00 this morning. I must have.
No, that's okay. That's my fault.
Apologize.
That's my fault.
The only other one I had was 74231 for W Down Excavating. Now I see we have something in our packet regarding an emergency to have that demolition take place, but I thought we did this one already.
We just didn't pay it.
Right. We didn't, we didn't approve the emergency, but we never paid them. Are we going to enter the lien on this because I saw there was no insurance? That's in the packet.
Yes, that's awesome.
Okay. No need to hold? Thank you.
That's all?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
I'm good, thank you, Council President.
Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
The only other question I have that goes in conjunction with what Councilman McVeigh brought up with regard to check number 741962 Palmer Trophy, I think, and that's in the amount of $125.8 for the 5K award. I'm having, I guess, a hard time understanding what really happened there because I heard the word donation, I heard the word we made a mistake. So before we, so the, once we know exactly what happened there, I don't think we should be paying these bills until either Mr. Thompson or the mayor can submit to us some type of it. Or CFO Murlow can let us know what was paid.
Thank you.
As it stands now, if we were to vote and pay these, we could quite possibly be cutting a check for something that was quote unquote already paid for. Was, is where I'm going with it. I don't want to double pay if we don't have to.
You want to list how many you're pulling?
Yeah. So it looks like we're going to take check number 74206, 74185, 74209, 74177. Was that one? And 74196.
Motion to approve is amended?
Well, it's already, yeah, motion to approve is amended?
Some move.
Second.
Rocco.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman. Council Vice President DeGrom?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Yes. We'll move on to bills of speed.
The second bills list, the current fund, $43,450.5. State federal grants, $263.7. Sewer utility fund, $520. Regular bill list, $44,233.75. There's no prepaid and there's no rent payments. So that grant total of all funds, $44,233.75.
Okay. And a motion to approve?
Subtle?
Second.
Councilman McVeigh?
No. Councilman. Council Vice President DeGrom?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Yes. We'll move on to bills of speed.
The second bills list, the current fund, $43,450.5. State federal grants, $263.7. Sewer utility fund, $520. Regular bill list, $44,233.75. There's no prepaid and there's no rent payments. So that grant total of all funds, $44,233.75.
Okay. And a motion to approve?
Subtle?
Second.
Councilman McVeigh?
No.
Councilman. Council Vice President DeGrom?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman.
Yes. Executive session. Councilwoman Davis?
I'd like to make a motion for resolution authorizing the offering of a settlement based on the discussion in the executive session.
Resolution 2018-0, 204.
Second?
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Here's the discussion. Public comment on agenda items.
Joe Miner, 392 South Main Street, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. Ordinance 2018-23. Until, this is the ordinance, the river view thing. Until two weeks ago, I was under the impression that the residential development and the parking garage upriver of Union Square were being removed from the riverfront development plan. This would allow the new railroad crossing at Third Street to decongest Union Square. I was misinformed. I also heard a rant that Phillipsburg was going to hell without redevelopment approval. Don't make the mistake of approving a bad plan. Amend the upriver development and parking garage out to replace the radibles without increasing school burden at a senior complex at its nursing home assisted living and R1+1 housing on the railroad right of way at the end of Stockton. Presently, the RCA program has given Phillipsburg a good 50's look. With cleaning and sweeping, tour busing feature to feature and signage, we can look good. Councilman Davis says refurbish and rent or sell is effectively moving us in the right direction. A small, proper plan will help a great deal.
Is being set forth to us.
Back in 2017.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, 2017. It was settled.
For 688.7.
Correct.
But COTI did pay the 688.7.
We took the money from the railroad and was supposed to settle with Eldmore for the dumpsters. We did not settle with Eldmore.
That's all I have. Enough.
Council Vice President.
74177 for RT Environmental. Do we know if that is the mold survey for Corless Avenue or if that is for the Armory?
I talked to, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I talked to Bob Merlo today about that. We approved $3,488. And right now it's $3,833. We approved that a couple of months for the municipal building. And he said he doesn't wear the increase. And I'd like to hold that.
No, I have 3488.
That's the right amount.
I have 38, 348.
Is it for Corless Avenue though?
It's for Corless Avenue.
Dave, can you make a note that we can get a copy of that?
Sure.
I'd like to know what the safety of the employees are. And...
We're looking to hold.
I'm okay with paying it as long as we have the survey and we can review it.
But Councilman Lutz wanted a little bit.
No, I misunderstood.
Okay.
I thought, I have the wrong, I missed at two o'clock this morning.
No, that's okay. That's my fault.
Apologize.
That's my fault.
The only other one I had was 74231 for W. Down Excavating. Now, I see we have something in our packet regarding an emergency to have that demolition take place. But I thought we did this one already.
We just didn't pay it.
Right. We didn't, we didn't approve the emergency, but we never paid them. Are we going to enter the lien on this because I saw there was no insurance?
That's in the packet.
Yes, that's all some here.
Okay. No need to hold. Thank you.
That's all?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
I'm good. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
The only other question I have that goes in conjunction with what Councilman Lutz brought up with regard to check number 741962 Palmer Trophy. I think, and that's in the amount of $125.08 for the 5K award. I'm having, I guess, a hard time understanding what really happened there. Because I heard the word donation. I heard the word we made a mistake. So before we, so once we know exactly what happened there, I don't think we should be paying these bills until either Mr. Thompson or the mayor can submit to us some type of it. Or Councilman Merlo can let us know what was paid. As it stands now, if we were to vote and pay these, we could quite possibly be cutting a check for something that was quote unquote already paid for. Was where I'm going with it. I don't want to double pay. We don't have to.
You want to list how many you are pulling?
Yeah, so it looks like we're going to take check number 74206, 74185, 74209, 74177. What was that one? And 74196.
Motion to approve is amended?
Well, it's already, yeah, motion to approve is amended.
Second. Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman?
Council Vice President Pete Rollin?
Yes. Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tippett?
Yes. We'll move on to bills of speed.
The second bills list, the current fund, $43,450.05. State federal grants, $263.07. Student utility fund, $520. Regular bill is $44,233.75. There's no prepaid and there's no grant payments. So that grant follow-up fund, $44,233.75.
Okay. And a motion to approve?
Settle it?
Second.
Councilman Lutz?
No, nothing. Believe it or not.
Uh, Council Vice President?
Nothing.
Councilman Davis?
No comments.
Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
Vic, I do have one. Mine is here. Check number 74255. I'd like to actually return the check. I won't be attending the legal municipalities. Yeah. I don't feel, after everything that's happened the past couple of months, I don't think it's, it would behoove me to go down, especially take my life down to Atlantic City. So.
Okay.
So we'd be removing check number 74255 in the amount of $350.
I'll move to adopt as amended.
I'll second.
Vocal?
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Pete Rollin?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes. Okay. There's some discussion. Public comment on agenda items.
Joe Minor, 392 South Main Street, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. Ordinance 2018-23. Until, this is the ordinance, the Riverview thing. Until two weeks ago, I was under the impression that the residential development and the parking garage upriver of Union Square were being removed from the riverfront development plan. This would allow the new railroad crossing at Third Street to decongest Union Square. I was misinformed. I also heard a rant that Phillipsburg was going to hell without redevelopment approval. Don't make the mistake of approving a bad plan. Amend the upriver development and parking garage out to replace the radibles without increasing school burden at a senior complex at his nursing home assisted living in R1+1 housing on the railroad right of way at the end of Stockton. Presently, the RCA program has given Phillipsburg a good 50s look. With cleaning and sweeping, tour busing feature to feature, and signage, we can look good. Councilman Davis's refurbish and rent or sell is effectively moving us in the right direction. A small, proper plan will help a great deal. I only expect you to nod politely. I have told you where and when you can hear the details. The broad stroke is already part of the public register to see my attachments. Nope, not only are you following a pipe dream, but if you realize it, you'll discover it is a nightmare. Now, I do have some comments on all the other little things too, and they're brief. The first reading has to be, on first readings, I have to do it now if I understand. The first thing on the first readings is 28, no, is ordinance 2018-. No, that's second reading. Excuse me. Here we go. A fairer price for being mayor of this town is certainly, shouldn't be topped out at 65. It was last, a short while ago, it was at 72, actually, A. I think a mayor's rate would be more appropriate to be between 50 and $100,000. It is a tough job. 2018-30. I'd like to, eliminating an aide to the mayor, I believe this is punitive. I wish, when you're thinking about voting for this one, think really how hard this job is, no matter who does it, and no matter where their positions lie, and that they do need help. Many, many places need help, but this is one of them. 2018-33. This is a bad idea. Handicap is definitely okay. This is that special parking thing. Certainly disabled veterans would qualify for that. But if we start a slipping, a slippery slope of special entitlements, one item will look like another item will, well, now we're going to have special need school teachers and now we're going to have. It will get out of hands for something just being in a classification. This is a really, it's a bad idea. And then there's one more somewhere in here that I hope I didn't miss. Now, the second readings, I get to do one at a time. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, Confi, 147 Low Street. On reference to ordinance 201833, as he was just saying, the veterans parking only, I'm just curious as to how that's going to be enforced. How do they show, they won't show harm? Do they have to have a placard? How does that get enforced? Since they can't even really enforce paying at the kiosks already. I'm just curious.
No, that's okay. So am I.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Deb Mathling, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, Director of Phillipsburg Library. A brief comment on resolution 2018-200 of the library roof. My first comment is thank you. And a point of clarification, I might, I'm telling you if I'm wrong, my understanding of this project is that it's a two-phase project. And this is for the old section of the library with the second phase for the newer section of the library to happen in the future. But that this project includes some remediation or fixes for that aspect of the newer section, the children's area, that's still under a great deal of trouble. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Good to hear because at this point, it seems to be getting worse in the children's area. We'd like to see that particular aspect of the plan happen sooner rather than later so we can move our children back into the storytime room where we've been kind of expelled from since it got as bad as it did.
Council Vice President?
Yeah, just one thing that came up at the last meeting was the, because of the amount of damage they found on the roof, the contract was going to exceed what we had allocated for it. So that's why they divided it into two phases so that we can adopt a second phase to cover phase two.
No, I...
So that was the reason.
No, I absolutely understand.
The way they divided the phases up, that's the dollar value.
Right.
Shows it went down, but it's actually going to exceed by, I think, it was $60,000.
Well, wonderful.
No, not wonderful.
Not too big. But, but that, again, phase one does include some remediation, not a new roof, but some repair options for the children's area. I'm right about that.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Especially if you raise your fees, I think I personally can finance this through my children's late fees.
And that's what we want to do. We want to raise it on the backs of our kids.
I understand wholeheartedly. I can't seem to give them the return amount of time, but thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else for public comment on agenda items?
Phil Timmerman, 112 North Riverview Road. I just had a couple of really quick questions. I'm just looking for some clarification on the bills list. Check number 74216 in the amount of $2,416.05 for porta-johns at four of the baseball fields. It's my understanding that during fall ball, we were only using two fields, which would be Bentley and Delaware Heights. Delaware Heights has a bathroom, so I don't know why they would need a porta-john. And the porta-john is still at Madison Field from softball and baseball season. It's not being used.
Not, it's clean?
I wouldn't know. I'm not about to try it.
I didn't want you to try it. I just wanted to see.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
One of the, a couple of the things, actually. 2018-37, the ordinance for the medical marijuana alternative treatment centers. I'm just wondering, what is the zoning pertaining to, like, what areas are we looking at these going into? It says District 2 and B2 zone and I2 zone in District 1. I'm just not familiar with what areas those are.
So, you have the redevelopment plan in front of you?
Not in front of me, no.
But you have seen the redevelopment plan?
Yeah.
Okay. It does have the zones listed out for you.
It's blurry.
It's blurry? I can get you a clearer copy if that would help. It would absolutely help you with the ordinance as well. As of right now, us personally, because it hasn't been before the planning board yet, this is just basically an ordinance of support outlining what will happen after it goes to the planning board. But it has to go to planning board first before it comes to us. I can hand you off to Vice President Pete Rollin, who's on the planning board. If she happens to know, because she just memorizes everything, you know the areas?
I believe two is the North Main area by Avantur. And one would be the other industrial area.
Okay.
No, that's four. That's four. I'm not sure what one is.
I'll tell you what, if it's okay, I can email that to you tomorrow.
Sure, that's no problem. And I'm just hoping, because I know it said something about it being in a drug-free school zone, and there's a daycare down there. I don't know if that's affected because that's not ultimately under the umbrella of the public school district. It's privately owned.
Right. So that's why it has to go back before planning and we will have to redo our zoning. But it's not a drug-free school zone. I think it's just a drug-free zone. And they are, if I'm correct, council, they are up to the council.
Of course. I mean, what's before the council tonight is the first reuniting ordinance that would affect the zoning limit down. Then we'll be, as the president said, refer to the planning board for comment and recommendations back to the council regarding this, that ordinance. So it's a process that's just beginning tonight. You'll get the doctor.
I'm agreeing with him at all. I just want to...
No, actually, the outpouring of support, I was amazed at the outpouring of support, so.
And I have one other thing. How's my time look? I'm good?
You're good.
Okay. Uh, crap. Resolution 2018-188. Authorizing a purchase of one Ford F-250 Supercab 4x4 pickup truck. For what purposes? Okay. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Phil Timmerman, 230 South Main Street, 33 South Main Street. Old business, ordinance 21826 bond. For $3 million for the sewer plant upgrades. What happened to the $8 million they got a couple of years ago and the $3 million they got a couple of years ago? And we still have a problem. Now we're up to 11, and I think they were looking for eight originally.
Right. The reason I laughed at was not at you. I laughed because Council Vice President and I had a very lengthy discussion this afternoon, and she asked me the same question as you did. So with that being said, I can tell you that we are still investigating. I think we're going to have a discussion this evening, so you'll understand a little bit more.
Hi, Deb.
You're very welcome.
Good way to start out. I'm Ed Bullock from 344 Warren. I'm President of the Phillipsburg Library Board of Trustees. I just have a follow-up question about the roof. We've been waiting a long time for this roof to be replaced. Did the contractor give you a timeframe as to when they'll start?
From what I told, what I heard from Stan was that they were ready to go. As soon as we pass the resolution, they are ready to go.
Okay, okay. Because we go to our board meetings, and then it's like, has anybody heard anything? What's going on? And, you know, that's three weeks away, so that's why I asked so that we, at least we have a, hopefully, when we have our next board meeting, work's being done because it's getting cold and...
I'll reach out to Stan this evening after the meeting. If it's not late, if it is, I'll reach out to Stan tomorrow morning. Is it okay that I reach out to you?
No, reach out to that Mathling, the director. Let her know.
I absolutely will.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment on agenda items?
Hi, Deb.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Justin Pierce, Wolfacey Grace Street. So the salary ranges for the mayor, so what are they actually? Like, what is the ranges? Have they changed from last time?
It's salary ranges for both council and the mayor. The salary range for the mayor has always been capped at 65. I'm not sure, and I think you're thinking back to the older days, right, when Harry, Harry Wyman was still mayor.
Harry was up to seven.
Right. Mayor Ellis reduced his maximum to 65 and kept it at 65 in 2017. What council is proposing we do this evening is we are lowering our minimum by 84%, both council and the mayor.
Okay, so what's with that? What's the new number?
It should be right on the ordinance. I believe it was in the amount of $500. Oh, they don't have the old thing? So it was in the amount of $500 minimum for council and $4,500 minimum for the mayor.
So they give me $4,500 a year?
Well...
Like, that's what I was asking.
It's interesting that you say that, but I can tell you this. There's mayors out there in areas that are more affluent, more... In the same type of government with 10,000 more people making $8,000 more a year, I mean, $8,000 a year. Right? So, yes. Is it ideal? No? Are we looking to do this? I'm looking at the past the ordinance. I can't tell you tonight what. I know you're looking for an answer. I just couldn't get you one.
No, that's fine. Listen. Hope Hatcom is the same way, but they're a part-time mayor. He makes $3,000 a year. You know, so I think it's fine. I think $65,000 is plenty. And I wouldn't raise it to anything above that at this point. I would just, I would just put, like, requirements, you know what I mean?
I don't believe that the mayor has asked for any more than 65, just so you know.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, there's seeing none. We can close the public comment portion on agenda items. And we can move forward to mayor and administrative reports. The mayor's not in attendance this evening. However, he does have a few appointments to be made. The first one, we had sent out a rice, not escorted. Do you receive anything back on that race on this? We have not. So in your opinion, council, should we discuss the first one or wait till the next meeting?
Well, I don't think the mayor was going to be here tonight to bring this up, so my purpose would be to wait.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's fair. Should we wait on all of them?
Well, I don't know what the mayor's pleasure is as it relates to, he sent something to the council requesting that these...
Yes. With regard to the first one, I was told that it's not changing. With regard to the second appointment, the risk management consultant, that was, and he did request that. And he requested the third as well via email.
Vic, did you hear anything back as to the VA? Okay, so in full disclosure, that was sent out yesterday. Typically, we like to send out the race numbers 48 hours in advance. So it's just an adequate notice. In light of the fact that we have not heard back from the employee, I, my recommendation is to wait.
Okay.
Until the 20th, I consider that. So adequate notice will be provided to the...
Okay.
If there's going to be discussion about it, if there's not going to be any discussion, any action would have to take place, obviously, in open session anyway. It's not set to closed session. So if there's not going to be any discussion amongst the council as it relates to that employee in that position, you can act on it now. I just don't know what the council's approach is.
With regard to that position, there may be discussion. I don't know how the rest of council feels. I would rather wait till the 20th, and we would have either a valid race on this or the mayor. We can move forward with the risk management consultant. The mayor is requesting that he appoint John W. Bud in the Bud Agency beginning January 1st, 2019. And that being said, I would need a motion to approve Mr. Bud? Submove. Give me a second.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion? No.
I mean, we already have one, and that's still 2,000, right?
2020.
Correct, 2020.
Oh, you're right, 2020. But I think we should stay with the person that we have.
Anything, Vice President?
I prefer with Councilman Lutz. Actually, we have a lot going on right now. Don't believe a change and would be in our best interest. We have somebody that's familiar with everything going on on the risk management side at this point, and I don't see a reason to change, especially when we have him contracted to 2020.
Councilman Davis?
I have no comments.
Councilman McVeigh?
I'll go on record as saying that from day one, I always said to support local businesses, operations, organizations, and I'll still stand by that. Unfortunately, we are in a position where we are loaded with litigation. I don't really see an end in sight until maybe 2020. With that being said, I, you know, I stand firm. I did a little research regarding what other townships this, this agency represents, and they are completely satisfied with that agency. So I just wanted to put that comment in of my support and the research that I did to move forward with that. Thank you.
Vocal?
Councilman Lutz?
To accept it? No.
Councilman Davis?
Abstain.
Council Vice President Pete Rollin?
No.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Volker?
My vote is yes. Fortunately, it dies because of the extension. It's a holdover for the time being. The next, okay, so our risk management appointment did not carry over. Just to be, just to be clear. The auditing firm of the mayor's choosing for January is Robert Swisher?
No, for 2018 year.
Oh, well, that's interesting.
The audit year, yeah, that's right. It's the audit year.
Oh, it's even more interesting that I didn't know that. So you'll have to excuse me because we didn't do this last year. Which, by the way, is our anniversary, I believe. Is it not? Happy anniversary. This is something to include. The auditing firm, Bob Swisher, for the 2018 auditing year is the mayor's nomination. Submove. I'll second. Discussion. Councilman Lutz?
No.
Vice President Pete Rollin?
I would like to see competitive bids. The reasoning, if I recall from a couple of years ago, when they made a change, or last year, it was cost savings. So I would like to see a competitive bid on the auditing firm to know that we are getting the best price possible for our services. Even though it is a professional service, I'd still like it to go out to admit it's a lot of money.
So your recommendation for the mayor to seek out?
Seek out three bids, submit them, and then make a recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Davis?
I'm confident that Mr. Swisher will give us a comparable price to what he did last year. Because I'm satisfied with accepting the nomination today.
Councilman McVeigh?
I too am satisfied with Swisher, but I'm also a conservative, and I like the idea of the bid, so let it roll.
Let it roll, he says. So we will go ahead and let it roll. Vocal, Volker?
Hi, Councilman Lutz?
No. No.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
No.
Councilman McVeigh?
No.
Council president, Holper?
No. Uh, the auditing firm does not, well, it's still a carryover, but I also, I would agree with the recommendation for competitive bids, just to see what the price is. For the record, I don't believe that he has to do that, though. Am I correct, councilman?
No.
Correct, okay. So he could decline, just so we're aware. Okay. Um, ordinances for a second reading, since there's no other administrative reports. The chief of police isn't here, is he? Chief? No.
He do have a fire report.
Do we have a fire report?
He's doing here. He's got it late. It's in our packets. We need it from CHF. That's one almost every month.
Oh, that's cool. He, um, he's giving out smoke detectors...
Okay.
Down on the lower portion of South Main Street, Stingrays, Mercer, and that. And they did a wonderful job, too.
Okay.
Very good job.
So what we'll do is I'll ask GK and then I'll, I'll give that report on the twentieth.
That's question report.
Oh, there you go. Well, thank you, councilman. Two o'clock in the morning? Okay, moving forward with the ordinances for a second reading. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six. Orders of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, establishing sewer rates for the year two thousand eighteen.
Some move. Second.
No, wait a second.
It's public, public hearing.
Yeah, let's have the motion.
It's okay. You can hang out. Um, that's fine. Um, so moves. Roll call.
We don't need a, we, we're bodying that. Now, now...
Joe, go ahead.
Okay, if I read correctly, this is not an increase, uh, for those not above the minimum. The way it's written, it's not a, an increase. And look, at the last time that this came up, it was sort of decided that you actually wanted to increase the sewer rates. Well, the way it's worded, it's not an increase. The residential minimum per quarter is there and a minimum per quarter somewhere else is there. This does not actually raise the rates. It's, it's gotta be a co-pay or something else. It can't be a minimum. I just thought you, you ought to know that.
Thank you, John.
It takes a little reread, restructure, which you could do right now, but...
Thank you, Joe.
Attorney?
Do you have a comment on that attorney?
Just dropping my sand for a little bit.
This does go up, yeah. We chose not to increase the minimum at this time. Josh, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't hear.
We chose not to increase the minimum paid at this time because the rate was going up so significantly?
This does not approve.
The rate went up quite significantly, Joe. It was just that minimum, if you, hey, your sewer's only fifteen dollars, uh, half.
Yeah, right.
Lucky you. We'll switch.
Oh, so this, oh, oh, five-one is an increase?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. That's, I didn't know that, and I was reading.
Was I believe zero, zero, four, seven?
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing. Now we can roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six has successfully passed. Uh, orders for two thousand eighteen thirteen A is in ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, deleting and replacing chapter five, administration of government, article twelve, Department of Recreation, section ninety-one, Recreation Advisory Committee Code of the Town of Phillipsburg, and deleting section ninety-two, youth center.
Some move.
Second.
Open for public? Yeah, please. You don't have to ask. You just, just move it up to the public.
There's always usually a line when I come up, so, um, why are we deleting, um, the youth center out of it?
Did Mr. Moore send you up here?
No, I just haven't been here in a little while.
No. The reason, we, we no longer have a shared services agreement with the youth center, nor do we share the executive director anymore, which is what that section is.
So does that mean that we're not giving them money anymore?
Uh, we did provide them with a stipend this year of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right, but I mean going forward.
That I could not tell you. I know that there's active discussions.
Okay, 'cause I'm just wondering, you're deleting youth center from the town code?
As of right now.
Right.
They are to receive the stipend, but there are active discussions that could affect that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Andy's gonna come up here and yell at me now because of you. Sss, is there anyone else? No? Okay. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Well, I guess we can discuss it. Go ahead, council vice president.
Now, the only comment I wanted to make was, if anybody hasn't read it in its entirety by December first, please submit your recommendations. Or if there's anybody interested in participating, there are members of the community open. You just have to submit it to the clerk's office by December first. So that we can get this moving. So I ask you, if you're interested, please submit that to clerk's office. That's it.
Can we get a, um, something out then on our social media and maybe some type of advertisement?
On the recreation page?
Yeah, maybe on the recreation page. The Recreation Advisory Committee?
The appointments?
They, they will be, yes. I actually believe you'll already be on it. You're the president, because you're the president of First Town?
Yeah.
Right. Counselor? No? Everybody's good? Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash thirteen A has successfully passed. Sir, can you come to the podium?
I don't want you to go. You missed your turn.
Oh, okay, I was sure.
Sure. What can I do for you?
Yes, my name is Paul Sandwell. I live at three eighty Grant Street in Phillipsburg. I bought a vacant lot to build a house on, which is located at five ninety Congress Street. Uh, I sent my, uh, guys who cut the tree down, they cut it down, leaning on the other property. Uh, we cut it down piece, they were waiting just to dry up a little bit, so pick it up. And then I went by, it was gone. So I was under the impression that maybe somebody needed for firework, took it. Uh, I didn't see any stickers or anything of that nature. And then I got a certified letter in the mail that they're gonna put a lien on my property for twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Can you see that, please? So you would just cut this, put it out, and they came by and picked it up?
They, they must have done it, uh, and I just applied for the one yesterday, we, uh, we hugged on that.
So this was in the yard?
It was in the yard, way back in the yard.
Is there a fence?
There's a fence all the way around in the yard and on the left-hand side, uh, not on the right-hand side. And this tree was in the back and on the left-hand side.
Did you get a complaint for this?
I don't know what, um, what was the, is it in the package tonight?
Um, the invoice date is, uh, September eighteenth.
What's the, uh, what's the number at the top?
Yes, here it is.
The invoice number.
Yeah, here it is, twenty eighteen dash ninety-two, Road Ranger holding.
Yes. I was on Congress, okay.
Public works was cut out to cut grass weeds and rain the tree and...
I have a last gift of, goes down in the middle of the table. I know, I'm guessing, um...
Well, it was August twenty-seventh, they were cut out. I mean, they went out. They don't go out for that, they get a lose after ten days.
And you cut the trees?
It was only one tree.
And you remember the date, right? Which was that day?
August twenty-seventh.
Well, if they picked it up on August twenty-seventh, that means that cut probably be before.
Ninety.
And there was no letter I received.
Right. You didn't receive anything prior to, correct?
No. I got this letter, I believe.
You said it's an empty lot?
Yes. I got the letter on September nineteen.
Okay, put it. Um, okay. Yeah, we can hold it. I, I wanna be, we wanna hold it just to investigate further. Um, can I reach out for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul Sandwell, S-N-A, Ms. David, H-E, nine oh eight, four six one, nine seventy-five, seven five.
You said three eighty Grant?
That's right.
That's right next to Todd?
Yes.
Oh, okay. He's quiet, right? He's not a party animal?
No.
If it's okay with you, um, I believe we have, we do have this already on file. Um, if I can reach out for you, uh, tomorrow or the next day, I just wanna be able to find out what their side of the story is from what happened, and then we'll be... Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. No, 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 please. If I keep that, you might never get back. Not to... All right, thank, thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your help.
You're very welcome. So we will go ahead and hold that one. Council president? Yes. Oh, sure. Yeah.
This gentleman happened, I, I had no idea he was coming into this meeting tonight. This gentleman happens to live behind your mother's office. He's my next-door neighbor.
So you're telling everybody where my mother lives, so she's a target.
But his, his property, what he did to that property was absolutely a nightmare, a real nail-biter. And what this gentleman did to, next door to my house, it's a showplace, wasn't it? And he's everything that the town of Phillipsburg is, uh, should, uh, to make his property pristine, so just give him a best, if you give him some consideration.
Oh, without a doubt. That's why I'm, we're holding it.
Everything more than what he said he was gonna do. It's amazing what he did to that property.
I promise you, you will definitely hear from me tomorrow.
Thank you, president.
You don't have to call me president. Bob is just fine, okay? Thank you.
Good night.
You have a very good evening. Thank you, council president. Okay, moving forward to two thousand eighteen dash fourteen A, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg entitled Open Space. This is our second reading.
Some move.
One second.
Opened up to the public for discussion.
Big question on that, um...
Come up to the podium?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Camera won't know who's talking.
Matthew Skurbo, ten seventy-three Pearl Street. Uh, just wanna know when the money will be able to be utilized through the open space. Uh, how soon, um, will we be able to use it for our community?
So if this passes this evening, after twenty days, it becomes law. It should be active immediately. After twenty days.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone else?
Just to clarify, like, council president?
Oh, yes, please. The committee has to meet.
Yeah.
But it's still available.
The committee, well, the, the funds are available, but council can't take any action on the funds that are in that trust fund until we receive advice from that ceiling committee that's being established by the ordinance.
He talks, he hires way too fast. Do you have his phone number?
I do, I...
Okay. Thank you, councilman Davis. Okay. Is there any other questions? All right. Discussion on council?
Nothing.
Just the same comment. Anyone that's interested, submit it to Vicki. There are council and mayor appointments.
Yes.
On this, so...
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders number two thousand eighteen dash fourteen A has successfully passed. Orders number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two A, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter four sixty-four of the Code of the Town of Phillipsburg ground property in order to add a new article, multi-family housing preservation and receivership.
Some move.
Second.
Open to the floor.
Joe Minor again, three ninety-two South Main Street. Uh, briefly, I've already said this ordinance begs for abuse and corruption. Another one I'd ask you to completely rewrite.
Thank you.
Last time I went through the wheres and whys and hows.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Discussion on the floor. Please, councilman? Councilman Davis, thank you. Councilman McVeigh?
No, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two A has successfully passed. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, authorizing an emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight dash four, dash fifty-three for the purposes of preparation of approved tax map.
So...
I got a motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
Open to the floor for discussion. There's seen none. We will close the public, uh, public discussion. Orders, uh, two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven for council. Councilman Woods?
Does this have to be sent out the bid?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
We have three bids.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
One question?
Councilman Davis?
Good.
Good. Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
I'm good as well. Over. Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven has successfully passed. All right, moving forward, there are ordinances for first reading. Orders number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight, which is an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, making the provisions of title thirty-nine, New Jersey Motor Vehicles and Traffic Regulations applicable to portions of block three two zero one and block three three zero one.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Peter Ralman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holper?
Yes. Orders for two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight successfully passes. The next is ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine, an ordinance of the town, uh, Phillipsburg County, Warren State, New Jersey, establishing a range for the mayor and council salaries.
Some move.
Got a motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Woods?
Nothing.
Council vice president?
Nothing.
Councilman Davis?
I do.
Okay.
I think it's unfortunate that we've come to this, this crossroads. Uh, I'm, I'm very pleased with the progress that we made on the other ordinances this evening, specifically what we've done with open space and with the Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, however, it's disappointing that it's taken us so long to get to these good things that I think we all agree on. And part of that is because of the constant fighting and mudslinging that we've had between, uh, our council and our mayor. And though we've had good words about working together and, uh, creating a team that's gonna move Phillipsburg forward, I feel that this ordinance is another shot across the bow to the mayor's office. While this doesn't actually affect the mayor's salary, the fact that we're, we're creating the possibility that his salary could be reduced by eighty-four percent is nothing more than a loaded gun to his head, telling him to comply or be punished. I think that, especially with the election results that we saw yesterday, the electorate in general is rejecting the tribalism and bringsmanship we've seen and the angry rhetoric that has come out of divisive politics. If we sincerely want to work together, we can't try to force the mayor's office or council to bow down to each other. We have to have truly constructive dialogue about the things that we mutually hold dear and want to improve. And this continued escalation is only going to result in poorer things for Phillipsburg. So I would encourage council to vote no to this measure and, uh, instead renew efforts to have constructive dialogue with the mayor's office as opposed to loading up another shot to, uh, force him to comply with our desires. And that's it.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman McVeigh?
I do have a comment. I do have a comment. Councilman Davis, well said on your part. I do understand what you are saying, but this is a line item, mayor and council. Council also is budgeted. And it just calls for, screams for accountability. I'm going to maybe get some crap for saying this, but I do more than the mayor. You do more than the mayor. And the three council people up there do more than the mayor. We get paid less than the minimum that it's even asked. So I have no problem making six something, you know, whatever it says, six hundred, whatever it is. It's just, you know, it's there. And no one, everyone's saying we're going to lower salaries. No one's saying we're going to lower salaries, we're just putting the scale out there. And if it does send messages, it does send messages. Sends messages to me, because if I'm not doing my job, we're not doing our job, maybe somebody comes to the podium and starts screaming, all, maybe obvious to suck it up and make about six hundred bucks a year, because you're not doing your job. And when that happens, and that council, if they vote no to that, they all cut their heads off, because they'll never be elected again, because they're going to turn around and say you're sending it for the money, you're not in it for the town or the, or the quality of life we're trying to bring, as you properly said, what we're trying to work for. Yes, communication is key. No, we don't have it. No, we won't have it. I'm convinced of that. Council President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Steve Black, please. I also would like to say, you know, Councilman Davis, that was actually, you know, a respectful argument. I do respectfully disagree, and I can tell you why. I've actually, after our discussion today, I have listed out the reasons that I support this, this ordinance. And it, I'm not proud to say some of the things that I'm about to say, nor will I, nor am I going to be argumentative or yell or scream. But I do believe that any job, especially in public office, we're constantly under scrutiny. And we are constantly being asked to provide for the public. No, I don't like the fighting. No, I don't like the arguing. I don't like seeing my name in the newspaper. That's not true, I enjoy that. No, I'm teasing. But at some point in time, when, after we were elected, I thought that the, the mayor would have stopped and wanted to get along. And the emails that we sent to him in the very beginning were extremely polite, wanted to work together, contrary to popular opinion, because he did put out a Facebook post saying that when he congratulated us, the only person that was nice to him was Council Vice President DiGraalmo, which is not true, and I have a text message here on my phone that I would be happy to share with anyone. Over the past year, if I had to evaluate the performance of our mayor, and I'm sure he can say some things about us, but I can tell you that this is, this is him. We've received multiple threats or harassment via email. The ordering, we've seen the ordering of staff not to discuss town business with elected officials on multiple occasions. He's had, he's threatened to have both myself and Councilman McVeigh arrested for going to the municipal building just to gather information required for council meeting. Some of this stuff you may not know, like the attempt at rice noticing individuals, including public officials, in retaliation for council appropriately and properly rice noticing, quote unquote, his employees, and then subsequently threatening to lay off or terminate those individuals because of their perceived friendships with us. The constant orchestration of disruption at town council meetings. Knowingly and purposely misleading the public and press via social media, instant messages and phone calls in an effort to cause fear, paranoia, and anger. Knowingly and purposely breaking the law by not carrying out his sworn duty to the people of this town by refusing to enforce legally passed ordinances and resolutions. The constant threats via Facebook, instant messenger, in person, or by postage mail to me, to residents, in an attempt to retaliate against them for speaking out at council meetings. The constant encouragement of filed lawsuits against the town by friends and relatives that he's hired since he was elected. His personal attacks toward all council members via Facebook. And when I say all, I apologize, Councilman, I do not believe that you were attacked by the mayor. So when I say all, all four of us. His attempting to cause disruption every chance he gets and his employment of an obstructionist attitude because he doesn't get his way. The many broken promises or no-shows to the meetings with our residents. The fact that he promised a youth organization that he would make every effort to ensure their home field was ready for playing upon, and then setting up a date to have volunteers available, only to never show. And then when those members of that said club came here, right here, before council and asked for help, we unanimously agreed to volunteer and assist, but because of his disagreement for Matt Skurbo, because of his personal disagreements with Matt Skurbo, he had Chief Steiner calling and threatened all of us and the volunteers with being arrested. And when I asked why to Chief Steiner, I was told, I don't know, I have to look it up. And this comes from the mayor, who just most recently has championed, quote unquote, for the kids. His false reports to law enforcement and the DCA to have the council investigated under erroneous circumstances. He's also threatened to withhold and/or cancel the New Jersey EIB loan due to my request of having an impact study performed. He wrote an entire op-ed to the Express Times full of lies and mistruths regarding the sewer situation, because he was caught dumping one hundred and forty-five thousand gallons of raw sewage into freshwater.
Just as a point of order, Council President?
Yes.
In indicating that other elected officials are telling lies or mistruths generally grounded in politics. I'm not saying that. You can't. However, I'm just saying it's generally grounded in the power to call people liars in the debate.
I understand. I'm still going to call him a liar. Hi, please. I do, again, respect it, but unfortunately, I've seen it one too many times. In the article, he claims that this was done, the one hundred and forty-five thousand gallons that were spilled were done under council oversight. However, what the mayor failed to write was the truth. He hid it from council in 2017, 2018. And furthermore, he pretended to be in charge and threatened to withhold sewer attorney bills because I had sought their guidance on an issue. And this was done to make me believe that he was in charge of the utility. His emails and the subject, on this subject, state the same. He circumvented established laws, makes claims of always being in charge, attempts to have council request permission for everything, and when we refuse, he once again lies on Facebook and pretends to be the victim. And most recently, and probably the most vilest of his actions towards one of our residents by engaging in what can only be construed as an alleged hate crime. No one, and I mean no one, should use the words that he's alleged to have used, especially our mayor. All this happened from January 1st, 2018, to this present time. If he were my employee, making sixty-five thousand dollars an hour, sixty-five thousand dollars a year, I would have fired him a long time ago, and he'd be lucky to make that forty-five hundred dollars. There is no loaded gun pointed towards his head. He is accountable for his own actions, he is a sixty-year-old man. I am accountable for mine, and he is accountable for his. It's the reason we chose to lower our own salaries, our own minimum, because if I don't deliver in the next year, I'm going to ask you all to lower my salary. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir. With that being said, roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council Vice President DiGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Holter?
Yes. Ordinance number 2018 dash twenty-nine successfully passes. Ordinance number 2018 dash thirty, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, eliminating the position, position of confidential aid to the mayor. Motion?
Does that move?
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Lutz?
Nothing.
Council Vice President? Councilman Davis?
I'm good, thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
I also have nothing. Roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council Vice President DiGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Holter?
Yes. Ordinance number 2018 dash thirty successfully passes. Order number 2018 dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg amending Chapter Sixty-seven dash Twenty-three Schedule Seven, stop intersections of the code of the town of Phillipsburg to add a stop intersection at Fulton and Lewis.
Does that move?
Second.
Just a quick, do, I missed, normally we get the police report and the engineer's report along with this one. Did we get that?
We, yes, we did. There was also one conducted last year. The average speed was forty miles an hour.
That was the recommendation that was made to do this?
The recommendation was not made by the police station. However, we're choosing to take this action. To be quite honest, I think the police chief sees Lewis Street once every nine months. So I spoke with Stan, and I can believe that this is needed.
Council President, let's be fair, the police chief, let's not talk about where he is, right? That's not fair.
Okay, I understand. Understandable, and I apologize, Councilman Davis.
No.
No, he's right. I did, I took a shot at him, I probably shouldn't have. He's correct. It's in poor taste. Councilman Davis, we agreed on something.
Every now and then.
Every now and then. Discussion? Councilman Lutz?
Nothing.
Council Vice President?
Nothing.
Councilman Davis?
Good.
Councilman McVeigh?
I didn't see the traffic or engineering report, but a former resident of Lewis Street and just a person that drives around Peabody all the time, I didn't know what was going to come sooner, my baldness or this sign. So I'm so excited that this is going to go through tonight, but what the hell took so long?
Councilman, that's... I'm glad you're not bald.
Me too.
That...
I live on leash.
Wow. Ms. Ramey lost his hair weight. So I have nothing to add, other than, finally, so, roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President DiGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Holter?
Yes. So, come on. Order number 2018 dash thirty-one, you guys have been so good. What did I say?
You said stay.
Because I'm... Okay. See, you guys missed us these past three weeks, I know you did. Order number 2018 dash thirty-one has successfully passed. Order number 2018 dash thirty-two, the sewer utility capital ordinance providing for various improvements and acquisitions at the wastewater treatment plant, buy-in and for the town of Phillipsburg and the County of Warren, State of New Jersey, and appropriating three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer utility capital improvement fund to pay the cost thereof. I motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Council President, I recommend that, I will be making a motion to table. I think we have some financial considerations to make, especially considering the settlement offer that was tendered this evening. I think it would be appropriate for us to table it pending the discussion we'll have later tonight and the results of that offer. So I therefore make that motion to table.
I will second your motion, Council. Roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
Table, yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President DiGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Yes, ordinance 2018 dash thirty-two has been successfully tabled. Orders were 2018 dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter Sixty-seven Vehicles and Traffic, Section Twenty-eight Parking Lots of the Code of the Town of Phillipsburg in order to designate certain spaces as veterans parking only. Do I get a motion?
Does that move?
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I also would like to table this until we get more information of where it's going to be placed. Well, we know where it's going to be placed, but how can they detect it? If it's a veteran, they want.
Yes, just Council, it's point of information, counselor. I think we've previously had similar discussions regarding the parking spots for the official tournament, and is a veteran in, in, of itself a protected class that we could establish for this?
This is not, this is not absolving veterans from having to pay for parking. So you can provide free parking for disabled veterans. This is not doing that. This is designating certain spots, two per lot, as veterans only parking, but they still have to pay.
Pregnant women and children.
Got you. Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
So while I, I...
Put a motion to the table.
I'm, I'm right. And who made the motion, Councilman Lutz? Is there a second to table?
How are we going to justify? That's my question.
Up to the mayor.
So my comment, Councilman, is not that I disagree with you, it's just that I believe that, and it's, it's one of my staunch beliefs, as much as I believe in no alcohol, not for me, but at town events, but the men and women who sign up for service to this country, and I know you feel the same way, I, I, I'm just saying that's where I'm concerned.
I'm not saying that of them.
I know, and I know you're not. I was actually going that route.
All I'm worried about is how can they detect who's a veteran and who's not a veteran to go in that spot?
No, you're, you're right. So you, you...
That's my problem.
Right, I wasn't, just so you know, I wasn't going to accuse you.
Like a handicap person has a handicap sign.
Right.
And every, you know, and I, I just can't...
Needs like a well thought out type of procedure, yes?
Yeah, that, that, that's why I would like to have it tabled. It's not taking away from the veteran, believe me.
I, I didn't think that, just so you know.
All I wanted is, is to find out how we can justify...
And enforce.
And, yes, and enforce it to a single...
I believe then that that is, that is a fair, a fair question to ask. I will second your motion to table.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
While this is tabled, can we fix the spelling issue, Paul? That makes me nuts.
Yeah.
Who did that?
Is it my spelling issue?
Only you did it.
There's an E on the other side.
Listen, I'm going to, I have to give...
That's typographical error.
I have to give a lot of credit to Council Leonard, because if it were, not for him and Vicki, this would never have gotten done, and this was a loaded agenda. I apologize. No, it's fine.
Do we have a motion to second table?
We do.
You had a second.
We had a second. We can roll call the table.
Councilman Milos?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Jolmar?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Paul Hore?
Yes. Orders 2018-33 has been successfully tabled. Um, I don't, now again, I don't wanna read on Facebook later that we're not in favor of the veterans. So just wanna put that out there.
Got you, I'm good, yeah.
Kurt, when you write that...
It's too late.
Orders over 2018-34, and orders of the town of Phillipsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, amending chapter 235 construction codes, uniform the code of town of Phillipsburg in order to implement a new fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Roll call.
Councilman Milos?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Jolmar?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Paul Hore?
Yes. Orders number 2018-34 successfully passed. Orders 2018-35, and orders of the town of Phillipsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, amending chapter 464-9C of the code of the town of Phillipsburg in order to broaden the scope of the non-retaliation requirement of the landlord. Any a motion? Some moved. And a second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Milos?
No.
Council Vice President?
Is it something, can I move to initiate this?
So, um, yeah, um, I happen to be speaking with a resident and, um, who was in fact retaliated against. However, the original way that we had designed the ordinance, designed the, uh, specific ordinance, the way it was written, it had only retaliation only, had to do with pests. And not landlord retaliation, like maintenance. Specifically, this gentleman had a hole in his floor in children's bedroom and was served an eviction notice after making the complaint. Then I went and visited the home. Apparently, I'm, I'm on the good list with a lot of landlords in town. All right.
Believe it or not, that happens all the time.
Yeah, I know, and I'm, I'm honestly, I think that this is what we need to curb.
There's no heat, they need a furnace.
So that's, that's pretty, you're, you're absolutely right, Counselor. Councilman Davis?
Uh, no comment.
Councilman McVeigh?
Good sir.
And I said what I had to say, so we can roll call.
Councilman Milos?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Jolmar?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Paul Hore?
Yes, Council, uh, orders 2018-35 successfully passed. Orders 2018-36, orders of the town of Phillipsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, amending chapter, or chapter 172 animals the code of the town of Phillipsburg.
So moved.
Second.
Comment? Is this, uh, as, as you told me, this is a state mandate to bring it up?
Michelle?
Would you mind coming up here?
Since, Michelle's our animal patrol officer, and she knows so much more about this than me. The only thing I know about animals is that my kids don't pick up after them, so... Is this, this is a state, this is one of the new laws by the state that we've constructed?
This is not a new law. This is just updating our laws because they haven't been amended since 1979 to kinda get up to current times.
So it mirrors...
So it mirrors the state laws.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I misspoke earlier than Counsel, but that's, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
I know Counselman Davis had some questions.
So, uh, is there, is there a particular problem we're trying to curb? It just seems, cause I'm a softie, so when I read that if a cat's found outside and doesn't have tags, it's gonna get adopted or euthanized in seven days.
Yeah, we're a little comfortable with that part. Okay, so our, our current ordinance states that all cats, okay, must be euthanized after seven days unless someone wants to pay the impound fee of $2 per day within two days of the seven-day hold. So, I don't like that. People aren't doing that. That might have been what they did in 1979, but that's not what we're doing now. Um, I've had a lot of success with adoptions of cats, um, through our facility. So I would like to change the ordinance to, to state more of what the state says, that after the seven-day hold, um, the animal then becomes a property of the town of Phillipsburg, and then, you know, we can choose, or I can choose to, you know, move into a rescue or a shelter, um, you know, properly, you know, dispose of the animal in humanitarian age if that is the case, that, you know, for trauma, illness, or anything, or I have the, um, the choice of adoption, adopting it out.
How often does that happen?
I'm sorry?
How often does that happen?
What?
Uh, euthanizing the cats.
Uh, every once in a while. Um, you know, I'll get in animals that have trauma, or animals that are really old and ill and sick, and, um, you know, the medical expenses and the cost of trying to find someone to adopt, you know. The vet will recommend the euthanasia for that animal. So it's basically based on what the vet recommends.
But you don't always euthanize them, right?
No.
Counselman Davis?
I just wanna make sure I didn't misread it, because I, I thought the way it read was that after seven days there, they must be adopted or they are euthanized. And did I miss that, did I misinterpret that, or misread that?
In our old ordinance, or the...
In the current one.
The current ordinance says that they must be euthanized after seven days unless, um, the person would like to pay the fee. Um, they only have two days after that, seven days to pay that. That's what our current ordinance states.
Could we change the language to maybe euthanized, rather than must be?
There's...
We're changing the new one.
That's what I'm trying to change, so that we, so that we have the option of adoption. So it will read like the title of four laws, like the state laws read, is what I'm trying to get the cat ordinance. So the dog ordinance reads, you know, what the state says. So I want the cat ordinance to read that as well.
I, I see you chase dogs a lot. Um, since I've moved, you've not had to chase mine, so...
It does say will be liable, uh, offered for adoption or destroyed.
Great. I've read the older ordinance apparently. Um, Counselman Davis?
No, I'm good. I appreciate your clarification.
Counselman?
Good sir.
Michelle, thank you. Um, I guess I truly do appreciate the work that you do.
I'll thank you.
You know, I'm, I know I'm not in the neighborhood anymore, but I, I do, I used to see your car drive off at 2:00 and warning calls. Um, I'm, so, thank you very much on behalf of the town for everything you do. All right, uh, roll call.
Councilman Milos?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Jolmar?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Paul Hore?
Yes. Orders number 2018-36 successfully passes. Orders number 2018-37, orders amending the revised general ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg and the county of Warren to add 625-11 titled Medical Marijuana Alternative Treatment Centers. Nope, it says medical marijuana, not recreation. I will, I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? Counselman Milos?
No, I just wondered what the 625-11...
I didn't have that little squibble thing that's attached on.
Oh, it was dollars. Um, he was giving us dollars.
You know, session sign?
Yeah. That was the closest I had.
Airport install works. Council President?
The only question I had was under section B, number one, where it says, the number permitted, it says a maximum of one shall be permitted for every 5,000 people. Is this, in a town our size, that could mean the rate? Are we able to bump that number up a little?
Uh, I believe this is mirrored off of the governor's...
This is the governor's?
I believe, I believe it was mirrored off his orders, not orders, but his, uh, draft of the law. But in all honesty, with the amount of square zones and...
I was gonna say, there's not a lot of land that would conflict. Okay, all right. That was my only comment.
Counselman Davis?
I'm good, thank you.
Counselman McVeigh?
I remember I introduced this a couple of weeks or a month or two back regarding this. I continue to monitor a Sussex County community and, and what they're doing with it. It's, it's, uh, it's run extremely well, professional, and, uh, again, like I said, I continue to monitor it, and I'm, I'm still in full support of what we have here.
Agreed. Um, to echo your sentiment, I, I believe, uh, you know, with Phillipsburg being in a running to obtain one of these centers, there's a lot of people in our town, uh, that could use something like this. You know, medical marijuana is a hot topic today, but the closest treatment center is an hour or more, an hour or so or more away. Those who rely upon that medication, especially in our town, and I said this in a post, um, you know, they end up taking the opioids to take away the pain as opposed to going to medical marijuana. And because in our town, it's a fight between your medication and your gas money, right? We have a 19% poverty level. Um, if we can change that, and I do personally aim to change that with my peers, we're going to change that. So if we can bring an alternative treatment center here, it's, it's not a horrible business, it's not an unsavory business, it's a pharmacy just like anything else. And I do believe, um, that the people in Phillipsburg deserve better. When you take opioids for a serious amount of time, we are seeing the effects of that constantly. Today, our police officers and EMS and squads, uh, our squads personnel, um, deploy Narcan sometimes eight times a day. I think sometimes even more than that, and you know, they wouldn't have to if we didn't push the harmful pharmaceuticals off on them. So, it is, I know I'm a Republican, I know it's odd to hear Republicans say that they support medical marijuana. It's even odder if they have three that support it. But, um, I'm very proud that we have a bipartisan, bipartisan support, um, across the aisle for something like this, and I'm truly hopeful that we are able to help those in need and those who are terminally ill. With that being said, roll call.
Councilman Milos?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Jolmar?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Paul Hore?
Yes. Orders number 2018-37 has successfully passed. These next are consent agenda items. I do realize some of these may want to be pulled. Councilman Milos, we will start with you. Is there anything you'd like to take off?
I'm just, I'm not satisfied with the Delaware law's court situation, all these resolutions.
So you'd like to discuss 191, 192, 193? Uh, I'm sorry, 190.
Council Leader, 190.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, if you, if you would entertain, and if Council would entertain, if Mr. Peck is here, if there are concerns or questions before we move this consent agenda, if we could have some chance to have some discussion with him, thinking that might look good with Council.
Sure. Is Mr. Peck here?
I am.
Hey!
Hey.
How are you? I didn't see you speaking.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm under the wire.
So since you are here, um, there are some questions, I guess, that Council does have. Councilman Milos?
Yes, um, what about the Kronzes property? What's the story and the fact?
That is subject to, uh, to a deed restriction. We did go back and confirm that. But coupled with that, the route, um, even if there weren't a deed restriction, we could run it through. We still need to utilize the Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Commission's right-of-way. And they did indicate, well, you know, we don't really have a problem with putting it in now, but we're gonna be widening the roadway, uh, in the near future, and you're gonna have to move a lot. And that's just not a feasible alternative.
Is there a letter on that, or anything, or is that just...
We're working on that. That's with, with the commission. We've had, we've discussed it with the commission, and they've advised us of that, and we're working on getting a formal letter.
Okay, going through the park, um, down the lane, is that going to be cemented in, or it's gonna be pike? Or what is, is it, or it's just gonna be laying on the ground?
No, it's going to be, uh, trenched at a depth of averaging three to four feet. Uh, sometimes it goes six feet under. Um, it's going to be a, you know, an electrical transmission cable within a PVC conduit pipe, and that pipe will then be encased in concrete.
All the way?
The length of, the length of a line.
Okay.
And that's not only in the park, but from where it begins and, and terminates. And then the soil will be backfilled, excuse me, into the trench, uh, and will be reseeded.
Okay. And is there a reason why we're doing this right now, instead of waiting for Kronzes, or what, what's the situation?
Well, we, we're gearing up to, and this is really a problem of trend, because ultimately, this has to be approved by the State House Commission, which is a group that, uh, no one really knows about, but it's, it's two Republican legislators, two Democrat legislators. They're supposed to meet four times a year, and they dispose of whether it's a state-owned warehouse, or state-owned land, anything like that. They're the ones who decide what to do. Um, as you know, getting four politicians, you know, schedules to sync up can be difficult. Uh, so the State House Commission, even though statutorily they're supposed to meet four times a year, sometimes they only meet two. And there's a whole process, and that's, we're hoping to be able to file our submission, and that's another one of the resolutions that's on your agenda. Uh, that's required by the DDP.
And when is the next meeting?
Well, we're hoping to get on for the March meeting, but I don't think that's realistic, March 2019. Uh, we've been told to expect a July 2019 meeting, but summer vacations interfere with that, so we may go beyond. But it's a first come, first served, so even though we may not get on until, say, October of 2019, which would be horrible from a client's perspective, um, we can't wait till, you know, the summer of 2019 to submit to Green Acres, because everybody else is gonna come, and their agenda is like yours, there's only so much room. So we're hoping to have a submission, long story short, we're hoping to have a submission to DDP by Thanksgiving.
The only thing that I'm, I'm totally against with this project, and that is accepting the five acres. Because where the five acres is, I grew up right there.
I, I, I can speak to that.
It's nothing but a swamp.
I might be able to satisfy your, uh, cause I had further discussions with Green Acres. It's actually that, that acreage is going to be deeded to, as a conservation easement. Uh, no municipality's gonna own the property, and if they did, I confirm that it would be catched in, but that's a, it's a different story. But it's gonna be conservation easement deeded to the Green, to the Green Acres Department in the DDP, to the, to the DDP. And we're checking whether, if the town wants, we can look and see, you know, can we make it for recreational purposes, you know, overflow from the park and that. That's entirely up to you guys. But you don't have to worry about being stuck with four or five unwanted acres of potential swamp land.
Well, I think for 68 years it's been a swamp.
Yeah, if, town will have, you'll only have responsibility for that if you want. Then we can see what we can work out with DDP. But the default position is it's just an easement to...
Now, you're not saying that we don't have to pay taxes on that, or it's up to...
It's in PohatCon anyway. It's up to, it'll be up to the property owners. Cause it's an easement overland, so somebody's still gonna own the underlying property. It's just gonna give DDP the right to prevent any development of, of that acreage.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Glad to clarify that. Council Vice President?
Yes. The four and a quarter acres, is that the minimum amount?
It's actually a little in excess, because the easement that were, and I, I don't have the, the fingers front, but I think when you, you add the permanent easement, it's just under a half acre in the square footage. And then there's a temporary construction easement that we're looking for. That's gonna go away, but we have to factor that into our calculation with, with Green Acres. So I think it's about eight tenths of an acre. We're supposed to have land compensation, uh, since we do have an appraisal of Russell Sterling. I don't know if any of you know him, um, but it's supposed to be a two-to-one compensation. The four and a quarter acres is, doing the math, like a five-to-one, five and a half-to-one ratio. So Green Acres said that should be good. Uh, they'll have to do more formal investigations, so we might have to supplement that with cash. Um, if they come and say, no, this is worthless swampland that, that you're giving to us, and, you know, the easements were something else, you know, we'd have to make up that difference. But again, it's not something that would affect the town.
Surrounding that land, it's a little hard to top it, I'm sure. Are these solar panels going on the ground, or are they going on a structure?
They're gonna be ground mounted.
Okay.
So, if, are you familiar with Striker's Road?
Which is a great deal, cause...
Yeah, there's nothing, it's vacant, oh, it's great.
They won't be hit by baseballs.
I don't know what the plans are for, uh, the development of former industrial rantrats, but, you know, that might, you might see solar panels being asked for installing there. But these will be, as, as I understand, that's just vacant land right now. So they'd be ground mounted, like, so if you've been on Striker's Road in Greenland, between 5:19 and 5:17, that's, that's what we look at.
They're not in there.
Yeah.
The 70,000 Green Acres, that will be satisfied?
Well, we'll say you have an outstanding obligation that, uh, according to Stan, uh, Green Acres valued at, it was 50 or 60,000 dollars.
It was 50 or 60. You're agreeing to up to 70?
75. Well, we'll satisfy, up to 75, you know, in some way you gotta...
Ah, come on, I mean, you know...
Hey, if it, if it takes a little push to get over the goal line, you know, we'll see if we can...
Well, that's where I was going back. If your fellow might negotiate, I think there's 90,000 something.
Well, we wanna be good, good tenants and good stewards with the town, so, thank you. I was teasing.
Drainage, the solar panels, we know, conservation. So, I had the question on the taxes, we may be subject to the tax on that?
No, you absolutely will not.
We will not, because the conservation listing?
It's land that's in PohatCon, that'll be owned, you know, someone else will be on the deed, not the town. And Green Acres would have the easement. Um, and you don't have to pay taxes on an easement. And all I'm saying is if, if the town does have an interest in, you know, walking trails in there, or, or whatever, um, you know, we can work with, with DDP to get that language and the easement. But right now, kind of the default is it just goes to DDP and it's, you can't, you know, cut down a tree, you can't, you know, put shelves in the ground.
So basically, they couldn't sell that land around it and develop it and...
Well, I think the land around it may be subject to development.
It is, it's for sale.
I think that's, that whole parcel, I think there's like three parts, we got the solar...
So they invite the whole parcel.
I think I'll whack, I wasn't part of this at all. This is like 30 minutes.
We remember.
But it's, uh, you know, the solar piece goes in, then there's gonna be a residential subdivision that I think's gonna satisfy PohatCon's affordable housing obligation.
That's up for word out.
And I think this, yeah, and I think the solar might even help finance. I don't know how it all works, but that's what it's gonna be.
Good. Thank you.
Any other council member or red chair have a question?
Yeah, there, one other question. Do you have any evidence of comparable deals for the amount of compensation that we're getting for the land that's being deeded to you guys, just for a frame of reference, about 75,000 dollars?
We had, um, well, we had an appraisal done on the four and a quarter acres across the street, and that came in, uh, I believe like 80,000 dollars, 90,000 dollars, something like that. So we're looking at a half acre across the street. Um, doing the math that way, it would be much less than, than the forty thousand or the seventy-five thousand, uh, that we'll offer. And it is a subsurface easement, you know, we're not putting a structure or otherwise restricting the use, um, of the park. It's just going to be a very...
Thank you. Councilman Wood.
I'm good, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Now, we've been doing this since December, Councilman Bede, uh, with your predecessor, so...
Yes.
We're very familiar with it. Yes, we're familiar.
Well, it's nice to be able to finally put it to bed. It's nice to...
I know, I agree wholeheartedly.
We're going to show off the table.
Thank you very much.
It is good, and I appreciate, you know, all the time and consideration.
No, thanks for coming out tonight.
No, I'm glad. Thank you.
So, uh, we, I probably just go on one ninety, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, one ninety-three. Can we do it as a block, or...
It's still there.
Yeah, so is there anything else on the consent agenda, anybody else?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
So, all right, let's start with Councilman Woods.
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Councilman, I mean, Council Vice President E. Drumel, I apologize.
Yes, well, we need to pull out and modify twenty eighteen one eighty-seven for the links to hold out twenty eighteen dash twenty-two.
Correct.
So we need to pull that one to amend that.
One eighty-six, sorry, Council Vice President.
Uh, yeah, one eighty-six.
Oh, yes, one eighty-six, yes. Twenty-seven mark.
It's for the tax notice.
Okay, no, I'm looking at the tax note. The... One ninety-five, one ninety-six. Oh, one ninety-six got answered. I'm okay with that. Twenty eighteen, one ninety-five. That one got answered. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Davis.
Uh, just to, uh, for Resolution twenty eighteen one ninety-eight, is the dollar amount two thousand one hundred, two hundred, one thousand, two hundred twenty-eight, or is it what we have in the actual body of the resolution? I'm making sure that the titles and the contents...
Actually, I was waiting for Shelley and Stan to get back to me with an accurate number. The first number I had in the body of the resolution was the initial number I was given. Then Bob told me that it spoke to Shelley, and the number had went up, but then I was supposed to get a number because part of the money was supposed to get paid by Aqua and Elizabeth Town Gas.
Okay.
So honestly, don't know what the right number is.
Okay, so we should pull that table then, thank you. Right, question, Stan?
Yeah.
You didn't hear right, Rich, can't you?
No, this is the...
Tillcon?
Tillcon was two hundred and five.
So if we table this, what, I mean, I, I know that...
We don't know the dollar. We've got to table it.
I know, but if we can get the ta, but, uh, Rich is trying to contact Stan right now, so if we can get that dollar amount, only because it's a pay check.
Because we were going to, we pay it all out and then send them a bill for the difference.
Okay.
That's why I was going to tell Bob anyway.
All right.
So...
Is there anything else then, Councilman?
Uh, that was it.
Councilman Bede?
Good, sir.
I also, uh, have no issues. Um, so it looks like we can approve the consent agenda with everything except for two thousand eighteen one eighty-six, one ninety-five, and one ninety-eight.
So move.
I will second. Begin roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes. They all passed. Not reading them all. Uh, ordinance number, we'll start with ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash one eighty-six, a resolution imposing a lien for municipal services. I believe the only reason for discussion was to, um, to pull and then pass as amended.
And voice number two thousand eighteen dash one eighty-two.
Okay.
And did you get the other ones that got pulled off, buddy?
Yes.
Any amendments that I sent?
I did, yes.
Okay.
So we can, uh, does anybody else have a discussion? Can you motion to pass as amended?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman Bede?
Yes.
Yes, Resolution two thousand eighteen one eighty-six passes. Let's go to two thousand eighteen one ninety-five, which is a resolution, uh, establishing annual salary for certain employees in town of Hillsburg. Council Vice President, you have a question?
I was curious why this doesn't match up to the salary range we have in the ordinance. Is there a reason?
What salary range were you, what, what did you see differ?
Well, one exceeds the salary range, and some of these weren't even on the list.
Um, do you mind if I ask which ones weren't on the list?
Yes, um, the animal control officer goes over the range. It's just like, I don't know.
No, she's on, she's on the range. These are ranges to forty.
Yeah, it was, it was. The one I had said thirty-five and thirty-five.
That was, oh, did we pass one that said thirty-five and thirty-five?
Yeah. The one I saw said thirty-five and thirty-five. I just want to make sure we modify it.
Is that the one point seven-five?
Yes.
No, I think that's what he did.
No, I hate to table the whole thing. I just want the corrections made that we need to do.
I, I, my only issue with tabling this is these employees have waited all the way from January for their raises, and we literally have...
We don't want to break the order.
So can we amend it to thirty-five? What, what is, what did he do it to?
I'm still of the opinion that we don't need to do this at all. This is...
Well, it's not that I disagree with you. However, here's my issue. Again, uh, and not be an argumentative, but he does have a pass of not enforcing something or using us as a scapegoat. So if we don't pass this, he's going to go back to the employees and say, council didn't pass this, I can't give you your money.
Well, that's why I'm questioning why some people are missing. I don't want to overlook anybody.
I went through this. I didn't see a problem. I, I, I thought he was right on point with the raises. They were one point seven-five.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. I just, I compared it to that. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Can you tell me what's...
Seven, eight, nine, missing. Sure.
Missing?
Missing, yes.
That means those employees aren't getting raises.
That's why I'm asking.
Well, the other judge is that he's on here.
It's listed differently.
The magistrate. So he just spelled it wrong. He's in Pennsylvania.
Yes.
Um... Municipal court administrator, which is the municipal clerk.
No, the court administrator is different.
She's a tenant?
She's not on it? No. She shouldn't be on there.
Who?
The court administrator. Can't be.
Yeah, and we have a, the public works superintendent and the public works supervisor, I think.
Just don't want to be slighted, that's all.
No, Council Vice President, my frustration's not with you. My frustration's partially with myself, because I've reviewed this.
Could we pass a resolution that covered all employees on the salary guide listing?
The unclassified?
Unclassified list? Could we modify it for that language?
Council, uh, Council Vice President had a question. I'm not sure if that's...
Would it be possible to modify, uh, amend this to just approve one point seven-five to all employees listed on the unclassified salary rate? This way they're not individually...
Yeah, as Councilman Davis pointed out, the, the mayor in this former government can set the salaries of the employees, non-metrical, non-civil service employees, set it to appropriation provided by the council. So as long as it's in the budget provided, the mayor can set this as, um, kind of belts and suspenders. I understand that's how it's been implemented. But to the extent that there are increases that weren't budgeted for, then that's obviously a different issue. There's no money to pay the increases, and you know, that shouldn't be...
I don't know if that was the reason or not. I just...
I know we budgeted quite a few of these for more than enough. Um, and, yeah, I thought he was pretty good, honestly, with the raises.
I would recommend that rather than passing a resolution and worrying about the individual details, we pass a general resolution endorsing, uh, the work of our public employees and encouraging the mayor to give them one point seven-five percent raise as prescribed generally and, like, yield to us. Does anyone object to that?
No, because you know why? It's holding his feet to the fire, and we did our jobs.
Agreed.
Right? And it's a lot better than the three percent that we were fighting last year. Okay, so can we do that? Is everybody acceptable to that?
Yes.
All right, great. And it's all retroactive to January first?
How long is Christmas present?
Well, not really, because they take a lot of taxes, even more so taxes these poor employees ended up getting the, uh, short end of the stick, in my opinion. All right, uh, so...
So I'll make the motion to amend this for my comment.
Right, what he said. He just talked, I asked. Motion passed, tomorrow night?
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes. Starting the next pay period, yes, they should start seeing this.
That's not...
I'm going to follow up. This should, this immediately takes effect, because it's a resolution, so I'm going to call.
It'll be wrapped up, so they'll...
It's just an endorsing resolution. We actually have no authority, so...
We have no authority to... From what I've...
So, uh, well, uh, Council, are we able to get clarification on twenty eighteen one ninety-eight?
No, so we're going to table that, yeah?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to table Resolution twenty eighteen one ninety-eight.
You didn't even let me say that twenty eighteen one ninety-five passed.
Sorry.
That's all right. It did though. All right, so twenty eighteen one ninety-eight, there's a motion to table, uh, because we don't have the appropriate number. If we need to hold an emergency meeting, I'm open to that, because Hecton Street does need to be paved.
There are big differences.
Yeah, it is, it is a big difference, so I'm, if we can get three of us together for an emergency before our next meeting, we will, I am open to that, as long as we get the correct number from Stan, so we can approve this. So I will second Councilman Davis's, uh, motion to table. We had no choice, because I just, we can't blindly approve a number. Motion table, and second roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council, Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes, two thousand eighteen one ninety-eight successfully tabled. Uh, then we have old business, uh, these were tabled from previous meeting. Order number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six, which is the bond, bond order is providing for the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant by and in the town of Hillsburg and the county of Warren, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three million dollars in bonds or notes to the finance costs thereof. A motion on the table? Do we want to keep this table?
Yes.
Okay. But there not, there being no second, or no motions on, on table, we're just going to skip it. Order two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three, uh, the ordinance of the town of Hillsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, adopting the business, the rear front redevelopment plan. Can I get a motion to untable?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second? Frank, you made a motion, all right, all right.
I made a motion.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Woods?
I, we already have one in, in progress right now. I just can't understand, like, I've been reading back and forth, back and forth to see the difference, and I really don't see a difference. If somebody can prove me wrong, that's great, but, uh...
May I? I don't mean, not, not prove me wrong. The difference, um, there is a through street in the amended, in the amended redevelopment plan on the side where the, the... Yeah, the green side.
Did we get the okay from?
We did. Stan actually did the work on that.
From the rear room?
Uh, yeah, we did, right? In order for him to do that, he must have.
No, it's an idea. It's not...
It's just a, I think that's the concept?
Just a concept.
Yeah, that's what I said. It's just a concept.
So it's, it really... And the other thing was the LMR property. What should...
No, that's...
So it's the same plan. The only difference is just pretty pictures. Right?
I think Council President, we have a motion and a second on table.
Oh, this is just on table?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, how about that? So we're going to have to roll call.
Roll call, on table? We'll go back.
Two or five.
All right, we'll go back.
Councilman Woods?
Uh, yes, on table.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes. Okay, uh, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three has been successfully untabled. Ordinance, Resolution, uh, it's getting late. It's nine-thirty.
We're just getting started.
I know. Councilman Woods, it's been on, it's been on table, do we have a motion to pass?
No, we have discussion.
I don't want to discuss it any further. All right, ahead.
The only request I'd ask is we may can put the empty word in, in that paragraph, whereas comfortably is adding the storage of empty waste containers. Other than that, I have no other. Since it's on table, we just amended to put those two words in that one paragraph, so we completely happy.
I move to amend.
Someone moved to pass to amend?
Rich, you know where it belongs?
I do. Anybody else? We're good? All right. Where's Mr. Moore set?
Roll call.
This is the moment you've been waiting for, man. Oh, no, he was being nice, actually. I wanted to see the smile on his face. Motion.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
He said yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes. I was just waiting to see if he did jump. He didn't jump. Yeah, I, far as perceived it, so, okay. Um, order number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three has successfully passed. For the record, I was, I wasn't obsequious. I was actually just happy to be waiting for it, so... Um, let's go back to, we got a number. The number is?
Two hundred and five thousand.
Two hundred and five thousand. Wow. Resolution of the town of Hillsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, awarding contract through the Morris County Cooperative, New Jersey, tillcon in the amount of two hundred and five thousand for the Hillsburg, Hecton Street... Motion on table?
Some of, I'll, I'll second that.
Motion table, on table and second. Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Oh, yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes, one ninety-eight successfully on table.
Motion to adopt and amend with a dollar amount of two hundred and five thousand?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President E. Drumel?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes, uh, two thousand eighteen dash one ninety-eight successfully passes. Um... Resolutions that were previously tabled, two thousand eighteen dash one eighty-one, resolution of the town of Hillsburg, county of Warren, state of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of fitness equipment through the educational services of Central New Jersey Cooperative in the amount of forty thousand five ninety-nine to three. Motion on table?
Some of...
Second. Roll call.
Councilman Woods?
Uh, discussion.
My second.
Uh, my second.
My second.
Discussion?
Uh, there's no discussion, we're on table in first.
Oh, that's all right.
There we go, yes.
I'll be all right.
That's okay, I'm feeling the same thought, so...
Councilman Lutz?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Pete Giallo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Polk?
Yes. Okay, now the rest is on table, discuss.
Need a motion? Some of...
Second, discussion.
Yes.
Yes.
Does recreation have this money? Or does that look great?
Please, please, before I do, go ahead, no, you go ahead. Yes, I do.
So, uh, I, I asked how we're gonna pay for this. And I was told we had money in 2012 that's been missed. So I said, "Well, then fix the ball fields." So, I, we had agreed at the last, I'm not favoring this just because we agreed to let the Recreation Commission, uh, come up with this kind of stuff once they were established, so, um, I'd just like to boot this down and let them come up with the plan to go forward. But this way we get it off the table. But, yeah, so apparently there's 2012 money that was not spent, but when I look back at the budget allocations, it... That's where they were gonna pay for it.
Those 25...
But we had too much work that hadn't gotten done, so...
Is there in back money?
Looks like there is, but I don't have all the expense files from 2012. It was all capital that wasn't spent, so, I, that makes no sense to me.
No.
And I wouldn't approve it right now anyway, fix the basketball court first.
I'm a true believer in that because, um, Mr. Fay, Councilman Fay worked his butt off for weekends with different contractors and going around and getting prices when Todd was, was president. And, um, we were promised that they were gonna be fixed immediately, and they were never fixed yet. It's the basketball court and the tennis court, two years later and it's not done. And the only thing that, that really bothers me, I'll tell you what bothers me. The bill was made out to the town of Philsburg, Rick Thompson, 108 Anderson Street.
You're right, that's not Anderson.
That's the U Center. I thought we were away from the U Center. Evidently we're not.
Oh, is that...
And it's, and the bill was dated 10/3 of 18. So there's something going on here that's not kosher to me.
For one, the address is wrong, it's, um, 10th and Drive.
Yep, and she won't change it.
We fill more street for it to be a town expense, but that was the money, so...
Okay. Councilman Davis?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Good.
Uh, no, this is a, this is a, this is the passer, we should be down. Roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
No.
Councilman Davis?
Next name.
Council Vice President Pete Giallo?
No.
Councilman McVeigh?
No.
Council President Polk?
No, I'm with Council Vice President, uh, let the new Recreation Commission take a look at this, and, uh, we have to figure out where our money is. Resolution 2018-181 has successfully been untabled and did not pass. We are now moving on to new business. Let's start with, uh, Councilman Lutz before we go.
New business?
Yep.
Uh, Vice President, Danielle and I have been working weeks on this. And, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we freeze the revolving loan money until we make up new buywalls on this. This revolving loan was for businesses, it started in the early 90s. And we started, I think, with a hundred thousand dollars that we got, if I'm not mistaken, from the town. And this was for businesses, if a person needs chairs or whatever, it stayed with the business. They would get a loan, whatever the percentage is at that time, like 4% or 3%, whatever, then they pay it off. Right now, if I may say, we're like, um, 980,000 dollars in the debt. And stuff has been going on that we have to stop it. It's not only the mayor's fault, or it's not only, um, it's mainly the bank's fault because it was with the Philsburg National Bank. Then they changed the Vista, then they changed, I guess, the PNC right now. And when we go to get records, we can't find the records, so we don't know what's going on. But we're asking Rich to at least, uh, we don't know if it's feasible or not. And a lot of these are businesses that are still business in town and still going forward. So, we, if Rich could, we'd like to ask Rich if he could look into it to see if there's any way that we can get a portion of that money back. I mean, we have to, I, there was stuff written off, uh, 2014, like 663,000 dollars, just written off. And right now we have 317,000 that we need to collect, as much as we can. So, I know, I don't want to be the councilman to say, people say to me, "You didn't go after the money," or "You didn't try," or whatever, and I think Danielle feels, I know she feels the same, we've been talking days on this, on this situation. And, um, just pay the bill, that's all we're asking. Just pay the bill. I mean, this goes on from 2010, 2012. One person came every year for money and nothing, we got nothing back. So, um, number one, I'd like to make the motion that we freeze the revolving loan and start new buywalls, uh, because it seems like nobody's had some buywalls on this, so... And what the bank was supposed to do, they were supposed to, once they got the money, they were supposed to put a second lien in their mortgage or whatever, and we don't know if it was done or not. We just don't know. So, we're, we'll, um, that's why I'd like to freeze it, so we can start all over and get everything in detail, and then let council pass it, and then we go forward from there. There's only three people, there's two council members and there's the mayor, that's on the board. And any money that's ever spent has to come up to council be approved. So, I just don't know what to do, I mean, we're, we're really, uh, mixed up here. Why this money just wasn't collected, so, uh... If you don't mind, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to freeze the money until we get a new, uh...
I'll second. That's a second to the motion to freeze the revolving loans, folks?
Yeah, we actually, this was, uh, if anybody read the audit, uh, this was a condition in the audit, it was a finding that had to be taken care of. The revolving loan had not been maintained, the auditors called it out, Mark and I looked into it together, he had some history on it, we pulled some paperwork. The answers we got as we researched it were inadequate, so that's why we started pursuing it and said, "We have to write policies." There's no application. If somebody wants money, they fill out an application for UEZ. Well, then it goes to UEZ, and then UEZ starts asking, "Well, it's not even the right place where it belongs." Then on top of that, there's the RCA funds available, which can go towards helping some of the residents with things as well. And there's no application sitting anywhere for that either, so... The problem is we have some resources available to people, and there's absolutely no processes in place, so... I think as we tackle one, we will probably be tackling all three to streamline them, make sure there's proper documentation, to make sure it goes through the proper channels, mayor's office, council. The boards that exist, if need be, but, yeah, we have, we, we need to act. Because some of these businesses are still operating, they're just not paying their debt, so, that's our goal.
Councilman Davis?
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McVeigh? No, good follow-up by Council Vice President, Councilman Lutz, on the, um, the audit and following up with that and taking a hard stance, what we had, and we'll, we'll take that. Yeah, I do think 980,000 dollars is ridiculous. Motion to freeze the revolving loan has been seconded, so we can, roll call.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Pete Giallo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
President Polk?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome. Council Vice President?
Are we open or no new business?
New business.
No. I'm good.
Councilman Davis?
No new business, thank you.
Councilman McVeigh? I have two things, my first is to request on our next scheduled work session, I'd like to, uh, put up for discussion, um, signs, not so much the signs that I brought up before, the ones being placed all over town, these are coming along more recent, um, election, those signs. So in 2017, as I sat out there, I watched council go back and forth, uh, with, in party discussion regarding political signs, lawn signs, big signs, banners, all that kind of stuff. And to be honest, uh, you know, I, I will speak, I will try to speak personally on this and so not to speak for my other two folks that I ran with, but it would be, uh, you know, we, I was kind of pulling for just, you know, let's stick to the yard signs, and, uh, I mean, there's former members in the audience that had certain passions for it as well. It seemed to get pushed and pushed and pushed to the point of, as long as it got pushed to where it, it could have been read in the time enacted, it was gonna have the run all the way up to November 7th, 2017 election day. So that's what it did, and really what is council had decided at that time was just to basically allow or put up the big old signs and anything over yard signs. So, I didn't like that, uh, what we had to do honestly is, you know, uh, two wrongs don't make a right because there's still gigantic signs of us, uh, laying around somebody in someone's garage, but you know what? It, it went that direction because we held off for the longest time until we had to get into the game, who knows? But, uh, again, I'm saying, moving forward and on the heels of coming off this, and I've even put up, uh, and I hated to do it, but on, on Facebook to put up a sign regarding on our, one of our local developed properties going on 22 and Roseberry Street, that a sign from up there just passed. So all we have, people coming through our town, which we're trying to improve, these big circus signs, some personal, some party driven, some, God only knows what it is, I just want, I just want to discuss it next time. I want to put an end to it, let's just stick to yard signs and, you know, for political purposes. Even I've even paid attention, I remember, uh, Mr. Minor was even discussing for stuff, for businesses and sales, I'm not talking about that, I think we all know what we're talking about. That we can come up here this year and make all these changes to all these resolutions and the orders, is, I'm sure we can iron something out regarding, because we're gonna have a primary coming up soon, you know? That's why I kind of would just like to put on for the next work session to discuss as a whole and see how the rest of yous feel. That's my first. You got that? Okay. All right, my second is to, uh, I had, I had mentioned a vote of no confidence a few months ago regarding the mayor, and I was letting that play out for a few reasons why, so it wasn't a haste decision. I, I want to discuss it, I wanted to have a meeting about it, and then I even further delayed it for the patience to let it sit. To compartmentalize and decapsulize what Council President Polk said this evening, I really can't even add to that. I think we can, but I'm not going to. I'm not walking out of this room tonight because I know personally, since I mentioned it, I brought it up, and after hearing what you said this evening, I'm making a motion to have a vote of no confidence this evening on Mayor Ellis. I'm wanting to make a motion, I'm making a motion, expressing no confidence. That is exactly what I'm doing, yes. So Councilman McVeigh has made a motion, uh, to express no confidence in Mayor Stephen R. Ellis. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second. Discussion. Councilman Lutz?
Pardon?
Is there a discussion?
No, no discussion, it's just, I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, um, it's just been too much for us. You just, people don't understand, like Bobby said, you just don't understand what's going on behind closed doors. You just don't know. And we, we try to, everybody tries to make ends, everybody tries to... I haven't called the mayor, I haven't gotten in touch with the mayor over a year now, since I told him that I was gonna run for mayor this coming year. Ever since that day, he doesn't even acknowledge me. So, I, I know what everybody else is going through, I know what I'm going through, and it's just... I, I've been on council now, this is my second term, the first term was in the 90s, and we had some hard people, Gloria, we had some hard people with Gloria, let me tell you, she was a staunch person. But, one thing she'd always do, she didn't care if you're Republican or Democrat, your door, her door was always open to you. She might like your suggestions, she might not, but she'd come right out and tell you how, how she felt, and that's the way it was, but it's, it's totally, totally different now. I mean, it's, it's sad, it's so sad. I just hope some people understand what's going on, um, because it's very difficult for me to second it, but I'm sorry, something has to be done. We have to work, we have to try to work together, work for the town of Philsburg, and it just isn't doing it. It just isn't doing it, and, um, sorry, some people might hate me for this, but I'm giving you my opinion. I'm only giving you my opinion and I tell you how I feel. There's so much stuff that needs to be fixed, it's not being fixed. It's just, I, I can't go on anymore, so, that's why I second it.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
That's a hard one for me. I, um... You know, I've had DCA call on me to, I've got another letter today. It goes round and round. Some of it's part of the job, that's okay, um, I didn't get into this thinking of it too much. I don't like not being able to work together at all, and I know, we've tried. I like to think I've probably climbed as high on the ladder as I can, um, doing everything cooperatively. I've attended everything we could, um, I've been there to support, uh, because I feel it's really important to... I'm here for the town, I'm not here for, um, to be cooperative or like, but I am here to do the right thing by the town. So I go to all the events, um, I don't care if the mayor's there or not, I think it's my duty to be there. My representation is important to represent the town. This is hard for me because I think it's, it definitely sends a very strong message. But on the flip side, um, you know, aside from the DCA complaints and, um, the awkward messages, um, you know, that is what it is, but the hardship is, okay, we are over 200 resolutions in November, and there's probably 30 or 40 that have, action's been taken. We're at 20, I don't even know, almost 40 ordinances? And Bobby, help me, how many have been enforced? I know you know.
30% have been.
About 30%. I have a problem with that. You know what, he, uh, he has the right to disagree with council's decision, but when we're overriding nearly every veto that comes across our desks, it sends a message, this is what council wants, and I talked to Harry Wyandell about this, "Harry, how did this work for you? Tell me how to make this work for council and mayor." And his response to me was, "Danielle, I never did a veto in all my life." He said, "I accepted council's decision whether I agree with it or not." That's the stance that has to be made. I think the mayor needs to accept our decisions so that we can move on. If he's not going to accept council's decisions, this isn't gonna change. Whether he likes it or not, it took me three and a half weeks to get an answer on recreation that I've been trying to get. that I've been trying to get an answer on. I finally got one today, but, you know, that, that's an important topic. You know, that was time sensitive, and to not get an answer, you know, then they get a big message that he won't respond to email at all, because it shows up on Facebook. Well, not by me. So, you know, to, to not get a call back, to not get an email back, to send semi-omnunctious emails and say, hi, this is the third request, please respond, in order to get an answer, but you know what, it's not the way I liked that great, but I don't like having to do it, but I understand. I understand where you're coming from. I, you know, I understand. That's it.
Councilman Davis?
I said my piece earlier, I'm for council president, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McVeigh?
I stated my reasons. This is what I'm going to say. I don't get off on this. I don't like it. I don't like doing this. For those who know me in this room, I smile, I'm, I'm a jovial fellow. So if, I know there's times to be serious, but this kills me. And just to show you, I'm not a hard-hearted man, I said, the famous line, I said, I voted for the mayor, I supported the mayor, I had his signs. The councilman Davis, the councilman Fulper, I'm sorry, I'm my law. But I'm saying here, I went into this with no problems, and it's turned into, I just have an issue with things not being enforced, and we're not being answered. It's like, you know, and I, I do, I, I, I email him, ask him here and there, how about his response? How about a response? I whittle it down to one question. I'm still waiting for a response to that question, I'm not even overloading the man. So, no, this isn't a mean-spirited thing. No, this isn't personal. You've got to do your job. You've just got to do your job, and be respectful about it, and represent our community in the best in our community, which is hurting fiscally, appearance-wise, morally. God bless you all for coming here and staying tight and sending the message out. I wish he was here. And how, how you can put your appointments on an agenda and not be here to represent those appointments? And so all of us, you know, have worked or are currently working, and you want to go in for a raise, and your supervisor doesn't even show up to support you to the people that write the check or cut that raise, that's exactly what it is. So here we are, trying to work with him. I even approved one of his appointments tonight. So again, it's, it's something I don't want to do, it's something I'm not proud of doing. But to tell you what, it's something that's got to get done. That's all I have, sir.
Exactly a year ago, at 9:49 PM, the mayor text messaged me, congrats. Day later, he had posted to Facebook that stated, "With the exception of candidate Dieter Alamo, who was looking forward, I attempted to congratulate others and was told not accepted, and all communications now go through Robert Fulper, acknowledged. And this town will run like you've never seen it before," or something like those words. From what I have been told, this is one of the most vile campaigns ever run, and you didn't start it, and you didn't start on my side. There's your new boss." And he puts a picture of Chairman Steinhardt on Facebook. Let me tell you what my real response was. Thank you, sir. Let me know when you'd like to meet. We cannot allow business to stop nor the people to hurt because of our past differences. It's time to move forward. That's still on my phone today, because I know I'm going to need it. And I can show you every text message between me and this man since I've taken office, and prior to. Everyone on Facebook and in the world of watching his rants, if you will, are under the impression that, well, we're just an angry mob, and we're upset, taking it out on him. You know why they're like that? Because he's lying to them in private messages. I've seen them, because two people have approached me this week and showed me what he said. And then when he goes to Facebook and he writes these crazy things like, we're eliminating parking, we're raising, we're giving out increases, the, just these, I, I can't even make heads or tails sometimes of what he writes. But on Father's Day, we went through various threats back and forth, and I told everyone there that day that I was not innocent because I went back at him because I was upset. When I said to him, "We have resorted to Facebook threats now too, mayor," his exact words were, "You started a long time ago, almost a year to be exact. The difference is, I stood alone while your pre-recruited, pre-rehearsed angry mob attached, and while the upstanding contributor to society video man tapped the council meetings while up and frank stood in the back smirking. You probably don't know one of your Jamestown group rolled over." I have no idea what he's talking about, because it's nonsensical, it doesn't make sense, and that's what I get from him a lot. But what I can tell you is that I have used many statements in my emails to Mayor Ellis of reaching across the aisle and working together. I've read a lot of them here. As a matter of fact, I won't get into all of that because we'll be here all night. But again, one of them was, "So this is my final plea, you either want to work together or you don't, but either way, the goal of the governing body is to move forward, because we cannot, will not fail our residents. You can join us or you can continue watching from home at midnight, but if you really love this town, please put aside your personal feelings and let's make progress." See, that's not on Facebook. That's not there for you all to see. This was a conversation between me and the mayor. So it's not showing off. This is how I felt. We wanted to get something done. You want to talk pre-rehearsed? Let's talk about the, the DCA letter, or him accusing Councilman McVeigh of bid rigging. You want to talk pre-rehearsed? Talk about the group that gets together every weekend and draws up these ridiculous complaints? Or how about when I'm with Councilman McVeigh, and this is the mayor's blackboard, with every single one of our names and everything we voted on? It's like a laundry list. Councilman Davis, you'll be happy to know you only have one thing on yours. I said that jest, because I truly do love Councilman Davis, there is no lie about that, that is the absolute truth. Everything, from providing a raise to overriding the mayor's veto, it's like a laundry list of stuff he wants to get back at us for. And I'll give this to the newspaper tonight, because this is horrible. Everyone on Facebook thinks, oh, it's no big deal, you know, they're just Republicans, they're causing trouble. Have you seen the man's Facebook? He says that he was attacked. He, he states his family was attacked. He's attacked mine on his personal Facebook page. I didn't attack him, and anyone who's on my Facebook page knows that I hardly put anything negative on it. The most negative I put was that I can't stand the Eagles. Okay? You know why? Because my kids see this. My kids, they, they read this stuff. This stuff here about me being a bad father? Well, my daughter saw it. How do you, you know, how do you think she felt? Here it is. Sending a copy of a lawsuit to a private resident, the lawsuit against the town of Phillipsburg that says, "Ban." He forwarded the lawsuit to a private citizen saying, "Ban," as if to encourage, as if he's encouraging this lawsuit, or he's in support of it. I'm sorry. But listen, I got in this to make a change, and whether this vote went down tonight, we would have been criticized one way, either one way or the other. I don't have any, I, I can't get behind the man, it's why I wouldn't walk with him in the parade, it's why I won't go down to the leading municipalities after I heard what he did to a resident in the town, and after you all find out eventually, it's disgusting and irreprehensible, and it goes against every moral fiber, moral fiber of my being. I can't do it, I won't do it, I will work for you as promised, I took an oath, I won't stop. But we will get our work done here. I have zero confidence in Mayor Ellis, and that's where I will call for a roll call.
Councilman Woodson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council vice president Dieter Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president Fulper?
Yes. That's all I have for new business, sir. I was a firework of new business, councilman. All right, so I'm not done. No, I have a few things. Okay, so, no, there is, I know, I just want to finish this. So in passing, past few months, we actually had a vote here a few months ago, and it went four to one in noticing plan board member David Morissette that we intended to remove him. He had written us a letter, which was the process requesting a hearing. I do believe, we do need to vote, and I would encourage everyone to vote and give him that hearing, so it is fair. We also need to go out, and I guess that would be council winner, or to see the, to see a competent hearing officer. It is his right, it is the process, I do believe that it should be done. It's been on our plate, so I'd like a resolution to see a hearing officer to hold a hearing for plan board member David Morissette. Second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Woodson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president Dieter Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president Fulper?
Yes. The second was, I was contacted this week by a resident regarding a request into the criminal statistics here in town, where he was informed by someone, captain, or at least department, that said he could not provide him with the incidents relative to shootings. What I will do is, I'd like to draft the letter to the police chief with council's approval, just to request a monthly report, so we could at least review it here. Since we can't get him here, I'd like to at least provide the report during the administrative reports portion, in hopes of keeping everyone involved and up to date. Would everybody find that acceptable? Is that okay to draft the letter? I will send a letter to all of you first for approval.
Haven't we asked for that four times?
If I don't put it in writing.
Okay.
I, I met with him, I thought he was coming here, and he hasn't, so I'd like to just roll them. I just want to write a letter.
All right.
If the other, council president, I just.
Do you want me to write the letter to the mayor?
I should.
Okay. Can I CC the police chief, so I know that I get an answer? All right. Any questions for the mayor?
Um, just inclusive of that letter, albeit a lot of folks will want to know some, you know, as much information as they possibly can, and I'm sure the response from the police chief would be, but just on that, upon that request would be to, to redact any sensitive information or current cases or anything that would put the case in jeopardy.
I imagine that's why.
Or investigations, yes.
And I think that's why he couldn't provide it. So I just figured I would at least ask.
Well, you know, if we go back to older meeting minutes, the prior police chief used to give a very, very good report every month with just some general things, so you knew the primary. If he could mirror what's been done already and just update it, I think that would be perfect.
Sure, sure. I don't ask. I'd also like to explore the possibility of re-implementing the block watch program here in the town of Phillipsburg. It's long overdue, and.
Signs are still up.
Well, the signs are up, but nobody's working, nobody's watching, right? So again, with your approval, I'd like to draft a letter to the mayor requesting the re-improvementation of this program, and then we'll have to work with the police department, and then perhaps hold a community hearing. So that's, if that's okay with you guys? Do they have any objections to the block watch program? Can you implement it? Vice president?
No, sir.
You have to call me sir, Nick. Councilman McVeigh?
No, the only, only, you know, ones removed from knocking on doors, and there were a lot of citizens that wanted to get involved, because they said they were afraid to make the calls because they, of retaliation of, of the bad folks. But given some type of moniker or status of the block watch captain within their community, making them all, you know, almost all liaisons to some reporting aspect of, of a police officer or a police supervisor, gives the citizens, and what we've heard, a sense of almost, they feel a little bit better protected, and in addition to that they have that connectivity to the police department, that they've encouraged block watching to make a comeback, and I look forward to this draft and forward.
The last we all have on our agendas, which is, we have two petitions from employees asking to have off on Monday, December 24th, 2018, and on Monday, December 31st, 2018, the office staff say, "Do you understand that they will forfeit their vacation days for these two days if approved?" Second. If I may, can I make a recommendation?
Councilman Davis thinks it's going to be bad, closed his eyes and shook his head.
My, do they have to use vacation days? Can we?
Yes.
Yeah? Why?
Because Christmas Eve.
Yes, yes.
So why can't we just pay for the day?
Major holidays in the office.
Yes.
They're fine with it.
They're okay with it?
Is it the parks office, Vicki? Is that why it's coming for council?
I'm just saying, I, I mean, I get all.
Standard for the office staff.
Okay, so these aren't technically paid, because I have paid holiday even these days. We don't, that's all.
The DPW staff did not want.
Okay. I will, I, there's no way I would ever deny this. However, I do believe, and I will, since we're going to motion, but I do believe, just so everyone's aware, I, if I'm correct, this falls under the authority of the mayor, and I don't want that to be, does that fall under the authority?
Yeah, the mayor questions.
Yeah, why is it coming for council?
Yes, Bobby, it's always been voted on.
It has. Okay, so we'll vote on it, but he still has, I believe, a final say by town charter.
Yes.
Okay, I don't, right, so I don't want to, for the employees, I don't want them to think that we're not giving you all, we are voting for it, but. So we do a motion, a second? Roll call.
Councilman Woodson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president Dieter Alamo?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president Fulper?
Yes. That is it for new business. I was just gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, councilman. If we, I have to as well. Could we just take a five-minute break? Five-minute break? Thank you. Five-minute break. Motion to reconvene? Is that good? Yes. Everybody says yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the politician, the public petition, it's the time where the public can speak, so I would request that you come up, keep it, you do have five minutes to speak. Know that there will be obviously no five-minute screaming, you have one time, and I need your name and address. Say?
Allen 80, 71 Lewis Street, Fallsburg, New Jersey. I mostly came here to just say one thing. One is, Mr. McVeigh is right on the signs, but I don't know how you're going to stop being posted in Lopat, Polhat, Alpha, Greenwich, whatever. I mean, you may be able to do it for Phillipsburg, but that's not going to happen anywhere else. Now, aside that, I just publicly and personally want to thank the town of Phillipsburg for voting Matt Skervo and myself back in the school board. And the other thing, there was a huge turnout, and the voters spoke, and, and I personally want to thank Daniel for putting us over the top. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, thank you for having me tonight. It feels.
Council president?
It feels, feels nice being on this side of the fence here, and this will.
And I personally want to thank Danielle for putting us over the top. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, thank you for having me tonight. It feels...
Council President?
It feels, uh... Feels nice being on this side of the fence here. And this won't take much time at all. I have like four bullet points I'd like to discuss tonight. After what I heard tonight, I believe it's time to unite the town, to solve the town's problems. I've heard all your outcries, and I hear you. And second of all, I think the mayor should focus on the real solutions versus false images of progress, like fake parks and fake recreation. Phillipsburg needs to rebuild from the ground up. And you know blight is our biggest problem. With that being said, and I know two of the councilmen up here agree with me, agreed with me in the past with this, that we need bulldozers to create clean spaces to rebuild this town. And I know that that is the solution. And I really wanted to say that tonight, and I just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Council President. You said twenty seconds, it was a minute.
Okay, again, Ed Bullock, 344 Warren Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the library as the president of the Board of Trustees. For 27 years, we had a federation with the county to provide services, library services to them. And on a regular basis, they paid us for those services in installments. And in the spring, we sent them a letter telling them that they owed us approximately $317,000. They responded to us, saying, "We'll give you $244,000." For 27 years, we used the same exact formula to calculate those numbers. Nothing has changed. They changed it on us. So we didn't take the money, because we were concerned that if we constructively received that check for 244-some thousand dollars, that they would say, "Okay, case closed, you don't get any more money, you have to fight us." Well, now we want you to fight for us, because we are getting nowhere with them. All right? We, they owe these, our citizens, as the way I look at it, $317,000 for the services that we provided to them, according to the same formula that we have used for 27 years. We can get no further with them, so I'm acting, I'm asking that you act on this, you act on this issue. Now, if you need information, you can speak to our director. She can give you all the records and show you what's been going on for all the years. She went over these calculations with Mr. Merlo. He agreed they're the same, they were done the same way as they've always been done.
I'll say for the council dedication, he has been on top of this, he's been working with my office and the CFO of Merlo, so it is being addressed.
Okay, but this has been going on since the spring. And the county's still saying no, so if it's been going, if... And he's on our board, the mayor's on our board, he's heard all this, okay? And that's not a negative comment. So he knows, he knows what's, you know, everything that we're talking about. But what's going to happen next, then? How are we going to resolve this? If that's, if it's ongoing?
Can we get a status report from the mayor? So I'm going to reach out to the mayor, well, councilman.
And again, I don't know who, if it is the responsibility of the mayor alone, I don't know, I don't know the process. So all I know is, they owe the money, they need to pay us, it's our money, and we want action. That's what I, that's... As a leader, that's what I feel is my responsibility on behalf of the library.
Absolutely. Well, the library's an asset, and I think we can all agree with that. And they have a lot of my money, Mr. Bullock. My daughters never return their books. So, we, um, we'll... Sorry, just trying to make light hearted. But we will reach out to the mayor. Okay, and we will, if you're worried about fighting...
Okay, and can you get back to our director, Deb Messling?
Without a doubt.
Let her know what the status is? Because I'm going to call her, and I'm going to see what's going on, and, you know, report it, we're going to have to report it to the board, and go, and, you know. We need this done, we need this taken care of.
I will make sure you have an answer within the next two days. Is that acceptable?
That's fine, I appreciate it. Thanks.
You're very welcome, thank you.
So, good evening. Oh my goodness, what a meeting today. It's my first meeting.
You're not in dress.
My name is Lorraine De Silva Lee, 401 South Main Street in Phillipsburg. And I'm here as the CEO of Lee Services, and that stands for Learning Enrichment Experiences. What we do is we provide services, which are education and training related to individuals with disabilities, as well as their families. And I'm up here because the young man that's with me would have taken out a few rows to get up here in his power wheelchair to make his point. So you have me instead. I want to thank you. I know I've gotten to know many of you as I've been asking for your help to just get individuals in the building. I've made the space completely accessible, and the issue has been that because of a curb cut issue, we haven't been able to get individuals like the young man that's with me here tonight in the building. And I just want to remind you, with the snow and the rain that's coming right now, there's a spot empty in front of the building, but yet he has to go down the block, across the street, back down the block just to enter the building. And if you can imagine negotiating umbrellas, and snow, and all of that, and so I'm really asking you to help to move this along as quickly as possible, because it's just wrong. It's wrong to see the rest of us walk right in, and individuals who use wheelchairs to have such a struggle to get in. I do want to remind you that these are individuals who work, they pay taxes, they contribute their gifts and talents to make our communities better. I also want to leave you with, that I have more than 30 years' experience in this field. I serve on national, state, and local councils. And I assure you, there are funds out there to make our communities accessible. I will work with anyone that you choose to try to secure those funds, so we have accessible communities. And that's for the moms in the strollers, the people on bikes, and individuals with wheelchairs. So thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you. You are where I did, I did meet with Stan, and he did, he did put out the quotes, he did the study, so we're all in agreement. We're going to do it as we can. Yes, ma'am.
So Connor doesn't have to run up here and knock out a few rows to make his point?
No, he does not.
Alright.
Thank you. I would ask for your name and address, but I think I already know, but you may still have to say it for the record.
It's not a problem. Matthew Skirbo, 1073 Pearl Street. Just have a question concerning the Ethics Committee, and I haven't heard much about that. I was wondering where that stands at this moment.
So, the Ethics Committee, and Vicky, stop me if I'm wrong, we were contacted by the state. It needed to be approved by the state. And from what I understand, it's still in that approval process, because I have heard that they've had some complaints. And they had asked us to notify them if we get anything. Okay? So then it would go through the state level. So we can't proceed until the state actually gives us the okay, which is disheartening, because we've appointed all of these people to the Ethics Committee. So that's unfortunately, unfortunately where we are at the point in time. Once it does happen, we'll let you know.
Thank you for that reply. I do have some concerns myself as a resident as far as some unethical behavior with the individual that sits on this council. And I would like for an opinion from Mr. Winters, noting that there was a council member that nominated two people to the Housing Authority, and voted on them. And there's a direct conflict there. I was just wondering what you think about that.
There was...
Two nominations recently for the Housing Authority within the past couple of months. This individual nominated them and voted for them in a public meeting, when they have a direct conflict with the Housing Authority.
I'll talk to you offline, you need information, I'll get back to you.
Okay. You're not aware of that, what I'm talking about?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is it okay for me to provide him with your phone number?
Of course.
Just stick around, I'll grab you after the meeting. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sir, do you want to ask? Your name and address for the record.
Priya Amador, 92A Mercer Street. Good evening, everyone. I came in this evening nervous, but knowing that this was something that had to be said. I am personally saddened, disheartened, clueless as to where to go and what to do, and don't feel like my voice is being heard outside of the council that did try to assist and direct me. Those of you that know me know that my son, my brother who special needs, and I, for the past two years, have been running our own personal charity that is funded by nothing else other than if we help out at a farm and we get some fruits and vegetables, or if I clean, or free hair, or bake, or cook, or whatever. I'm not a 503(c) or anything. And I've been fighting to get a community garden here. The long short of it is, I went to the municipal building to get a permission for a yard sale to get our van fixed, because our van currently that we deliver food and vegetables with is destroyed. We need $2,000 to get it fixed. And so we were having a little yard sale, and Mayor Ellis is still on my Diversity Soul Kitchen page, which he told me that I need to give my name up of Diversity Soul Kitchen to his wife, because she's better connected in the community, to which I said no. Then I've still never received the meeting that I was supposedly promised here. And when I was in the office speaking with Ms. Kleiner about another subject, Mayor Ellis busted in, and he was rude, derogatory to me, to the point where I had to get a police report done, because he basically verbally abused me. He felt, I felt like he was going to hit me. He had me pretty much pinned in the chair, could not move. He kept coming further and further towards me. When I went to file a police report, the officer asked me if I wanted to have them talk to Mayor Ellis, you know, pretty much like, "Chill out, back off." I said, "Okay, that's fine, maybe he was having a bad day or whatever," but I was still upset because he told me that he didn't need my vote, and why was I even here? And it just got even worse. After that, that's when the stalking began. He started driving past my house, I started getting random phone calls. And then the following week, he knew we were having a yard sale, and I was outside, across the street from my house. And if you know Mercer Street, it's a one-way street going up. And when people come, there's a little dip, so you can kind of hear the car when it dips. And I'd already seen the back of his Jeep, it had the little logo, soccer logos, and all kinds of stuff on there. And I turned, I looked. Now, he knows, and I've said it in other meetings, that I have PTSD. He kept trying to trigger me in the office when I, when he was coming at me. At this point, he, I was parked on the left side. He pulled up next to my car, and I was basically pinned between his car and mine. And his window was down. And he said to me, and I quote, "See, you nigger dyke cunt bitch? I know where you live, you live in my fucking tent. I own everyone here, I own everything here. You can bitch and cry all you want, it won't matter." He accused me of being a spy for Bobby and Frank. After that, I went in my house, because I was so petrified. And my partner asked me what happened, because she was like, "Who is this pulling up so close? Is that one of your friends just goofing off?" And I didn't say anything, because I didn't want to get upset. But after that, I started getting the threats of, "I can get to your kid at any time, my wife works for the school, I know where your retarded brother goes to the park, I can get at you at any time, any place, anywhere." And then the next event that happened was on the 27th. I was, saw a lady that I helped before coming home, and she was struggling with a bag of groceries and her kid. And I stopped and I helped her. And Mayor Ellis was standing in front of the old one-stop. And when I turned to get in the car, I pretty much jumped, because I saw him across the street. And he pointed to his eye, and he pointed at me. "I see you, I know you, I see you." And I have, at that point, I couldn't take it anymore. And I wrote a letter to the council, which was directed further to the prosecutor's office, to where now I'm being told nothing. Okay? No one will touch it, no one will say anything to me. I had no information. They took my computer, they, I gave it, fine, no problem. They took my computer, I still, they're still investigating the situation. But like I said, nothing has happened at this point. I live in fear on a regular basis. in fear on a regular basis. He, I mean, he even said to me, I had no reason to drive over here, when I very first met him, after we were helping a family that burnt, got burnt out of their house. So it's like, you had no reason to drive over here, but yet you come over here on a regular basis. And I personally am holding the state of New Jersey, the town of Phillipsburg, and the county of Warren, all financially, criminally, and socially responsible, because I and my family make a contribution to this community. There's over 10, 15 kids every Saturday and Sunday that come to my home to eat, I'm struggling to pay my own bills right now, and I don't deserve to be treated like this at all, and I don't even need anybody. That's what I wasn't gonna cry about, but I'm really afraid, and upset, and scared, and angry, and I wrote letters and sent this to Cory Booker, Attorney General, Civil, the Civil Rights Division, they said that they don't have, I don't have enough evidence for them to do anything. I've been attacked on Facebook by this Rosalie June lady in his defense, I've had so many things happen because of this, and all because I'm trying to empower my community to be self-sufficient. All of this is over a garden, a garden for the children, to help our food bank, so people can stop saying, where's my free this and free that? Root little penguin, die poor hog, get up off your behind and quit wearing your puffy like a badge of honor you do for yourself. If you talk about lighter pride, what about community pride? What about self-pride? You can be poor, but be proud, do something for yourself, and that's all I was trying to do.
Ms. Cooper...
Then I've got over it, I'm sorry, but that's it.
You, you don't need to be sorry, unfortunately, because of matters of litigation, I'm unable to comment, but what I will say is, you're brave, I apologize, and I would ask that if there's somebody here that could please at least walk her to the hallway to get something, tissue, I don't...
It wasn't even about me, I just wanted to protect my son, and my brother, and my family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? There seem none, we will move forward to council open time.
I have nothing.
Council vice president.
Just a couple things, it was at Halloween parade, it was very nice, the attendance I thought was really good, it was nice to see, it was quite busy, a lot of people came out, hopefully people can continue to participate in the parade. There weren't a whole lot of floats, but what was there, there were even people throwing hot dogs out of a float, which was something, which was very nice. Last Monday, I attended the Warren County Governing Officials Association meeting presented by the Warren County Prosecutor's Office. One of the topics I spoke with the school board president, Roper Son, about was what to do in the event of emergency in the schools and our buildings, emergency management procedures, protocols, the Warren County Prosecutor's Office will do presentations, so we talked about it, maybe a good idea to have it during a presentation, perhaps during a council meeting, as a presentation so people can come and hear what to do in the event of emergency. We have had some true emergencies, and everybody rushes to the school, that's actually the worst thing they can do, and he did reiterate that, but we said, one of the hard parts for them is they do, come in and do a training once for parents, and it's kind of lost after that point, campuses are very busy, so they don't have the opportunity to do that, so with permission, I'm gonna talk to Roper Son and look into scheduling possibly a community event to train everyone in the event of emergency in the school. Only other thing, because the other item on the table, I've been working on a prospectus, I had a conference call on urban enter, um, opportunity zones, so I spoke with a very nice person who gave me some direction, and basically said, it's your, so it's 48 pages so far, but that's kind of what I'm working on, so, trying to keep things moving, but they said the first step is promotion, you gotta promote, 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 and we have zippo, 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 and the state of New Jersey's actually pretty slow to adopt, so they sent me in the direction of some nice templates, some towns that have been very proactive in the process, and had some success with utilizing that opportunity as a designation, so I took the leap and started working on one for Phillipsburg. I will present it as time permits, probably during the working session, after I've talked to the mayor about it, that's all I have.
Thank you, council vice president, Councilman Davis?
Sure, you just remarked, if I recall correctly, at 4:00 PM yesterday, we had several hundred more voters that had cast their ballots at the polls than in all the 24th election. Just makes me very excited and happy to see that so many people were getting out and using their, their democratic rights, and hope to continue to see that we have lots of participation in the voting process here in Phillipsburg, so kudos to all of you yesterday for getting out and casting your ballots. That's all, council president.
Thank you, council. Councilman McVeigh?
Absolutely nothing.
I, I have one thing, I, a letter note, I see we have approval for junior firefighters, Jacob and Dylan Dushak, I just wanted to tell you, man, I coached these kids when they were five years old, and now they're junior firefighters, they're about to be junior firefighters, I am getting old. I have nothing with regards to council open time, I do appreciate everyone coming up this evening. We can close that and move on to the motions, we have a motion for the approval of an application for active duty for Ryan O'Grady, Alert Hook and Ladder, county number one, and an approval for the application of junior firefighters Jacob Dushak and Dylan Dushak. Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Look?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Deidre Hopper?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holfer?
Absolutely, yes. Last item is, there was a special use permit we need to, okay, okay, or for, for an anti-bullying rally, and I happen to know the young lady who put in for the permit, did you want to speak at all, did you want to let everyone know? If you don't, it's okay, we'll just approve the permit.
Also waive the fees.
And, and, right, and we'll motion to waive the fees associated with it.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Look?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president, Deidre Hopper?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council president, Holfer?
Yes, so we approved with, fees waived, and Vicki, did you want to say anything? You don't have to, if you don't want to.
Thank you, I hope that everyone's trying to understand anything, if anyone wants to speak, I don't know how Danielle loves it, so she needs to speak for our council we have.
I'm okay with that, I will absolutely be there, but I will be in the crowd if you think that this is a topic...
If you, if the council is attending, then council will be up front, so I will appreciate it if you guys will come out and, and help us out, just to, you know, show solidarity in our community, especially with anti, especially with the bullying issue that's going on in town, and that's me speaking, that's it.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing what you do. If you have a 5K, Josh isn't allowed to run because he wins all the time, it's cheap.
What was the date of that again?
November 17.
Thank you.
Can we put that on our website and social media as well? And I'll give you Vicki's personal phone number, so everyone can call her. Nah, no. Vicki, I'm gonna put your personal phone number on Facebook. I'm kidding. That's great. Okay, with that being said? All in favor? All right, let's get out of here.